Bill today. Ben Davenport is over with the battery-making company, with some people from overseas. He'll be a little bit late getting here. And I look forward to a very good meeting. And John Scott leave at 5:30. And so anyway, that's the schedule of everyone. Our first thing will be a city council's briefing. And we're going to start the process with a short-term rental review and discussion. What we will have first is Mark Stiles and Barry Frankenfield to kind of give us a synopsis of what has occurred in the past. Mark or Barry? And we're glad to have you.
Good afternoon. But that might be a little more than we're going to give you. But we want to, I just want to orient you to the handouts, which will guide your discussion. And I think Mark has a few things to say also. But we have a big sheet, which is a matrix, matrices, matrix, of all the issues related to the staff recommendations and the planning commission recommendations. They are all compared the same way. And then Councilwoman Henley asked us to prepare another sheet, that's the smaller sheet, which just compares the beaches and waterways commission recommendations. So we will be here to answer any questions you have about those. You're welcome to use these as tools to work through the process. That's the extent of our presentation, except I believe Mr. Stiles may have some comments.
Mark?
I don't really have significant comments. We provided to you in your package this weekend, the transcript of the speakers at the planning commission. I have also left at your, around your place today, a copy of the revised version of House Bill 824, which I told you at the time of our retreat, applied only to Lexington and made no reference to CUPs. That was amended in the Senate General Laws and Technology Committee yesterday and reported out, and it now does list Virginia Beach, and it specifically, if passed by the whole Senate and completes the process through governor's signature, would name Virginia Beach and would prohibit the use of CUPs. So I just wanted you to know you had that there.
Very good, counsel. We've got up to an hour on this to talk through it today. Obviously, there's a public hearing, I believe, next Tuesday, if I recall. And then the next week, we'll have another workshop, and then the following week, the vote. Does that sound appropriate, as it stands right now?
Right. It's a good change, I would hope, if we're not ready.
Very good.
Well, also, the legislation changes. That could change everything as well.
Well, it did change.
Well, I know, but I mean, it hasn't been passed, has it?
Right, right. Very good point.
And it hadn't been passed, but if it changes, that could change everything as well.
Right, right. Okay, anyone want to get going here? Okay.
I'd just like to start it because I, I don't know about the rest of you, but the past 24 hours or so, I've had just numerous emails and calls from people who have been receiving things that I'm very concerned about. And I'd just like to ask Mr. Stiles, because of the things that these notifications are telling people we are planning to do, I would just like Mr. Stiles to tell me, if any of these things that we are looking at, here's one. City council is trying to abolish short-term, anything under 30 days rentals in Sandbridge. Do any of these things that we're doing, would that do that?
No, ma'am. Under each one of these alternatives, there would still be the opportunity to conduct the activity. Alternative one would have an overlay district, and one of the proposed overlay districts was in Sandbridge. Alternative two would have, although it has a CUP requirement, would grandfather every existing short-term rental, which would include a number of existing rentals in Sandbridge. And then alternative three, and the planning commission alternative, don't even impose any conditional use permit requirements. So none of the options that are presently before you would abolish the short-term rental activity anywhere in the city.
So that's a false statement.
Well, it, there's nothing in your alternatives that propose abolishing the short-term rental activity.
This one is similar. City council is about to pass new ordinances that will end rental homes in Sandbridge. A flood of Sandbridge homes will go up for sale or into foreclosure. No rental activity in Sandbridge means no tourists. This will directly impact the businesses of Sandbridge, Punggol, and Red Mill. This is not a scare tactic, and so on. Does anything that we're considering, would it end rental homes in Sandbridge?
Again, Mrs. Henley, none of the alternatives that are on the table for discussion as of today would stop that activity. They all would allow it to continue, in most cases, without even a CUP requirement.
And this conditional use permit thing is sort of become the big bear that we're considering, that we're considering a conditional use permit, which is absolutely horrendous. I've been to the Civic League meetings and attempted to explain what conditional use permits are, how prevalent they are in our ordinances, that they're a tool that we use frequently. Because, you know, we either have uses that are permitted uses, they're prohibited uses, or there are uses that are allowed with a conditional use permit. But unfortunately, folks are being led to believe that a conditional use permit is just a horrible kind of thing. For example, this one, and of course, it includes this logo, "No conditional use permits, our property values are at risk." Anyway, a couple of statements I would like to read from this one. When city council passes these ordinances, rental homes are required, and that's in black letters, to have a conditional use permit. With over 900 rental homes in Sandbridge and no rental activity, homes will go up for sale or be foreclosed. With hundreds of closed homes flooding the market, your property value will decline. Opposing forces have used scare tactics on all other Virginia Beach communities. They have convinced all of the other neighborhoods that allowing Airbnb in their neighborhoods will cause havoc to their residential communities. Be clear, this is not an Airbnb issue. These opposing forces have been targeting Sandbridge rental homes for over two years now, and they are finally winning. Airbnb has been something that we added to all of this back in 2016, when we recognized that it's become very prevalent. And I think Airbnb and home sharing and so forth. So my next question would be, does this apply to Airbnb, Mr. Stiles, and all types of rentals? Or are we singling out one particular type of short-term rental?
All of these alternatives identify the activity by the duration of the rental period. Whether it's rented through Airbnb, or direct rental, or through a local real estate agency, any rental of less than 30 days is treated the same.
And then this one. It appears that they are still, meaning the city council, are still leaning towards requiring a conditional use permit in black letters. This could result in an interruption in your ability to rent your home while you apply for the conditional use permit, with no guarantees that the city will issue you the permit. Based on normal volume of applications for conditional use permits, and if no one else in the city applies for a CUP for any other reason except for short-term rental, it will take approximately 10 years for the city to consider all of the applications. This is effectively eliminating the activity within the city. Unfortunately, doesn't mention anything about grandfathering. Now, if we grandfather the existing uses, would there be any interruption in rental of anyone who is currently renting their home as short-term rental?
No. If your ordinance said that all existing rentals that had registered and were paying their transient occupancy tax were grandfathered, then those businesses would not have to get CUPs. Presumably, they would already be registered, and so I don't foresee where there would be a delay or an inability for them to carry forth their existing contracts.
Well, this is just a portion of what's been going out. And it just really disturbs me that people are getting such a misrepresentation of what we're considering. It makes it not possible for us to really talk with people to know what they would accept. I would say that in this last one, which was sent out by Mr. Keenan, he did a favor by including our name and address, because I've had some wonderful calls from really nice people who just say, "What's going on?" And when I get to explain the concept of grandfathering and so forth, I find that there's a very broad acceptance. But when people are not told the reality, but are told a lot of misrepresented information, I won't even use the word fact, because it's nowhere close, it really does stymie our ability to work. And it's very disappointing that we have all of this at this particular time, and it continues to be out there. I think it's misrepresenting the hard work that a lot of people have done over the last almost three years, and all of the committees that have reviewed it, all the things that we have done. I appreciate the planning commission's 25 hours, but I know I'm not less than 1,000 hours in looking at all this, with all the reading and studying and meetings and so forth. We've looked at this a long time and in great depth, and people have worked very hard. And a lot of people have worked hard to come up with compromises. And I thought we had, I thought we were on the road to some compromises. But when we have this kind of stuff, it's very disheartening and very difficult to deal with.
Can I add something, please, along the lines of what you're saying? I've got to tell you that I had several phone calls that Mrs. Henley had said publicly last Tuesday that it was going to be a conditional use permit or die, you know, and that was not factual. And in addition, we all got a copy of this letter from Charlie Kelly, who was getting a Richmond couple to buy a house for $2.7 million. And it says, "From what I heard last night's council meeting indicated that conditional use permits would be required for any short-term rental, and that there would be no grandfathering. This thinking contradicts the recommendations on the planning commission. The logistics of how to process CUP applications for the existing 1,000 vacation rental properties is mind-boggling." That being said, I got on the phone and I called the gentleman. And I got very bold, I guess. Anyway, he sent me back, "Thanks for returning my call this afternoon. I appreciate your counsel to tell my clients to go ahead with the purchase, since the worst that would happen is that everything would be grandfathered." And I believe that is pretty sensible and accurate statement. And I said, "I believe in the council, believe that." Thank you very much. All that being said...
I said, "I think grandfathering," I said, "I think he's correct."
Hey, that's a Moss and Cecil's there.
He's for Henley, isn't he?
But all that being said, you know, we cannot sit back and ignore what the state has said. And it's right here in black and white. I would sit back and say to you, I would hope that if we came up with something in a time period that's fairly reasonable, that we could go take it to the state and ask them for perhaps some reconsideration. Will we be successful? I can't sit here and tell you that we can.
It's not passed, correct?
Hmm?
This is just a bill introduced.
It's, but it's gone through. It's came out of the committee unanimously. So, you know, but my thing to you is, I don't think we should throw in the towel at this point. I do think that we should, you know, look at, you know, a lot of these options that are on the table, and see what the vast majority could support and what would not be supported. I'd also sit back and say to you that, you know, management committee, and I will stop talking after this, but one of the issues that I want put on the table is, and this is something, if you look back a year or two ago, I don't remember when we start, when we came up with, we want someone to be able to get to the property with, was it a 30-minute time period that we put in there, Jim?
Yeah.
Something along those lines. And management companies were very happy with that, and very supportive of that, and I would think would continue to be, because, you know...
It's their livelihood.
Really. And so, you know, that's the one thing that I can't understate or overstate, is the proper management of an Airbnb versus Sandbridge, Shebert, or whatever type thing at Sandbridge. But I hope we can come together with a way to, you know, formalize that occurring. Yes, ma'am?
I am concerned with this legislation. If it, if we enact something that's got the CUPs, and then the general assembly outlaws them, then we've maybe, I don't know, if there's a gigantic hurry, maybe we should slow our decision down to see what they're going to do.
Barbara?
Well, I would think the very basic thing that we should do would be to object to this legislation, because it's one more example of the general assembly taking away the right of the locality in land use issues, which is a basic responsibility and has been for years, except a couple of other things they took away in the last few years. And this is then therefore becoming a pattern, to have the general assembly, just because somebody doesn't like something that we're doing, be able to hop in on any locality and say, "I'm just going to legislate it out of your authority," I think is not the way the Virginia General Assembly has normally worked. And so I would hope that we would, at the very first initial thing, is to immediately send something up north that we do not want this legislation adopted.
John?
Well, I don't know that I'm on board with that. We are creatures of the general assembly, and we only have the rights the general assembly gives us, so we don't really have any rights. So I guess we know what people feel like, who are in other countries who don't have any either. But we are creatures of the legislature, and sometimes you've got to be careful what you stick in the eye when you don't have a high hand, it could come back to haunt you in other issues. So I think we have to be careful, if we're going to draw a line, that we have a specific proposal to go to the line with, rather than just a, "I don't like it." It's, "I understand your concerns, I think we've addressed those, can we get some relief?" I think that's a better strategy, personally. But I'd like to know a little bit more about the process, because my bias, and I've said on my Facebook, so it's not new, so no one will be surprised in this room, that the grandfathering, but overlay districts, because my view is, I went around and talked to neighborhoods with Fairfield, where they don't want their neighborhoods to become, because they're not resort areas. They understand Sandbridge, but overlay districts allows us to maintain the integrity of our overall zoning, but be responsive to the real-world market conditions and what has been our historical practices. So, and I think they can be customized. So maybe Barry could talk about and educate us on what that process is, and what is involved in that, and what's the customization that that offers.
All right. We actually looked at a couple different ideas. One was to come up with a delineation of the overlay district in advance. That was not supported by the planning commission. A better option, we think, would be, if you want to pursue that, is that a community could come forward, similar to they have in other places, for other things, for the old beach, for the dredging, and come forward, and as some consensus of the community would request an overlay district. So oversimplification, if Sandbridge requested an overlay district, then we would go through a process with the staff and the planning commission to come forward with a recommendation. The criteria for that recommendation, whether you have petitions, or whether it's a public process that we simply manage and bring forward, and it's comments through various ways, it could be done in a couple different ways. In any case, our vision, and Kay's going to jump up here and smack me if I say something too wrong, but our vision would be that it would come forward as either a request from the community, or it would be generated by staff at the request of a sponsor on city council, and we would bring it forward to the planning commission, where it would be vetted through planning commission, and then would come through to the council for your approval. And that would typically take about four months from beginning to end. And that would be one way. There's a lot of flexibility, there's a lot of details that I didn't really get into, but as far as the conditions, the delineation, that kind of thing. But we think it could either come forward simply from a council sponsor through staff, and then it's vetted through the planning commission process, or it's brought up by the community and brought forward with a certain level delineation. In either case, it takes about four months. Kay, you've had any, all right, I must have been pretty correct then.
You'll say so.
Can I just add something to that? If that is the approach that we were going to take, we would need to either not adopt the CUP requirement until we were ready to identify and adopt the overlays, or we would need to combine options one and two, essentially, which would be to say...
I think that's what...
Existing, and that's probably, that's probably something that should have been clearly identified at the outset, which was, you could combine one and two together, such that you could grandfather existing, and then you would be in a position to allow neighborhoods, as their community leadership, identify the need to come forward and say, "For my neighborhood, to deal with all those that may come in the future, we'd like to have an overlay, so they don't individually have to come in and get CUPs." So that's probably something we should have identified earlier in the process, but that is something, that is probably the way you would do it. I would tell you that every overlay you have now, and Kay, correct me if I'm wrong, every overlay that you have in your zoning ordinance right now came to you because the community came to you and said, "We'd like you to create it," not the other way around.
I fall in crush, I couldn't, is, and the overlays do not have to be uniformed, like our zoning ordinances are. Each overlay can be customized to the availability of parking on the street and those types of things, is that correct? They do not have to be uniform in their content and regulations?
All of the zoning people around the outside of the room are nodding affirmatively at me.
We're all nodding, yes.
So, yes. And one last question that I could, unconditionally use permits, so that's not something that I favor, so let me just say that right up front. But I do know that when you have conditional use permits, still government can't act in an arbitrary and capricious manner. So we'll have to have some consistent set of factors that we apply in granting those. And as that body of evidence builds up, then our discretion, as we move on, gets narrowed. I think we have to defend how we're making, this can't be because someone says, "I don't want it next door." There, you have to have a basis by which, is that true? I mean, I just, people, I know in the past, we've been told, "You just can't deny this because you want to. You've got to have a rational reason that's consistent with treating everyone the same and giving them due process."
You have a, you have a very deferential standard that a court would test you by, but yes, you can't just arbitrarily, without any reason on the record, deny.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Rosemar?
I want to get back to this change in the legislation. What is the timeline that it would go through and be voted on? I mean, I know that the governor would still have to sign the legislation, but do we know the timeline that we're dealing with?
I personally do not. The steps it would still have to follow, it would have to be approved on the floor of the Senate, and then I think because the Senate changed the House's version, I think it has to go back over, but, and then it would have to be signed by the governor. But I, I mean, Mr. Mathias would have to answer that. I'm going to acknowledge my limitations.
But it's my understanding, the original amendment went through 100 to zero through the House, and it's...
Ninety-five to five.
Is that what it ended up being?
It's already gone through the House.
Okay, good.
Is there someone who could find out the timeframe?
No, because it's already gone through the House, so then it probably doesn't have to go back.
But it had this number three added to it.
They amended it.
Oh, okay.
It was the Senate committee that amended it.
Oh, do we know who carried that?
I will, I will find it. Mark, could you get someone in your office to call and find out what the time?
I got Bob right here.
I'm texting the show.
Okay, thank you, buddy.
I have a question about the grandfathering, because I think the only alternative that we've seen that says that it's, everybody, anybody grandfathered prior to January 1 of 2017. So would we be talking about, I mean, how many registrations have we received since January 1, 2017, to this time?
That is, that is the straw man that we proposed. We picked a date arbitrarily.
Okay.
You can adopt that date, and then we would have to analyze how many came online in the interim, or you could say, and you have done in other, in other contexts in the past, it's grandfathered effective of the date that the council approves it.
Okay.
Which would eliminate any gap there.
Well, because my concern, we just, we said that we would, we implied that everybody would be grandfathered, you know, assuming, you know, assuming whatever ordinance we passed, so. But the only thing I've seen in writing is just January, January 2017. And then I had just a thought, I'm not, I don't think home sharing needs an overlay or a CUP.
I don't even have home sharing on the table right now.
Okay, well, it's on, it's on this.
None of the alternatives require a CUP for home sharing. It is, it is by right, everywhere in the city.
Well, I, well, I just, I think it's important to me that home sharing definitely stays by right, because that's a totally different thing than short-term rentals, personally, in my opinion, but, so I just...
I think the session ends Saturday. So, that's a short timeline.
Barbara?
The only thing about home sharing, I think all of them allow home sharing by right, but the difference is was whether any of the... Conditions? Regulations applied to home sharing or not. I think the alternatives that came from Mark's office had some of these, these conditions also applying to home sharing, but the planning commission took out all of those. Is that a difference?
I believe that is...
That's correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
I was, when I, in case my response wasn't clear, and it may not have been, I apologize, I was referring to the requirement for a CUP. You wouldn't need an overlay for the CUP, but we did have certain of the requirement, the conditions would also apply to home sharing, like parking and that kind of thing.
You say you need an overlay?
No, you do not.
Don't need one.
John?
Well, I kind of looked at some of that, and I know I've talked with the mayor and others on this noise thing, and, you know, we've never been successful at that. So if we're going to have anything that deals with noise, we just need to say, "No outside, amplified noise after 10:00 AM or 10:00 PM or whatever."
You're not talking about...
Just something that's not judgmental. It's a binary thing. It's either before 10:00 or it's after 10:00. Everybody can judge that. It's not, everybody over in there with their decimal meter reader trying to get sound, that doesn't make sense. Parking, I think that will be one of the things that overlay district can deal with going forward, looking at that. But we've got to be able to use our digital database that we spent so much money building, and people know how big the driveways are, they know what the sidewalks are, they know what the streets are. And that'd be pretty easy to build a table, a matrix table, that's, that's a fact versus a discretionary judgment to look about parking. And I think that should become a science, not a judgment. And we, and I'd like to see what that would kind of look like before we did something, because I think that should be, people should be able, go online and see what it is, and they can see their digital piece of property on there, and they know what the scoop is, if your driveway's 10 feet long and 90 feet long, or it's like my mother-in-law's beach house, she's got concrete that goes from the street underneath both sides of her house and across the front, and she can get 12 cars or 10 cars on that thing, and other people have only this, and it's crossed, and then get six cars. But you can see it. I mean, it's not, we've got to be able to know by property, and it should just be a mathematical determination, I would hope. And that takes all the guesswork out, and people just know, "Hey, I got it or I don't." And I think that's, makes sense. That's what I would hope to, because I don't want to have something that we traffic and things that we give people, I said this before, on a belief that they, we have something we can enforce, and there's some assurance there, when in reality, there's really not. And I don't want to give staff a burden, and I'm sure the city manager would agree, trying to enforce something that's ambiguous. So we need to keep these things as common sense and binary as possible, so it's, makes it easy for the enforcement people, makes it easy for the police officers, and makes it easy for the owner to know, it's either this or it's that. That's just an observation, not a question.
Jim Wood?
So, Mark, if I, just to kind of go through this, absent a CUP, if there's another, if that's not selected, if that's not permitted, then the, logistically, it would be, somebody would get a license for this? Is that, is that how it works?
The only thing that would remain there would be the administrative registration process...
Through the commissioner.
Through the commissioner.
So then how do the rules kick in?
I'll jump in here. So every business license, land use approved as a business license, or in this case, a registration, starts in the commissioner's office, and then is either electronically or physically or by phone sent over to zoning for approval. So... or physically or by phone, uh, sent over to zoning for approval. So the way we envision it is that you come in and register, it's a very quick process, it, uh, most times it happens electronically. Zoning staff reviews that registration to see if it's in the appropriate zoning district, and then in this case, we would review it to make sure that it meets the parking requirements, which we agree, that can be done fairly simply, the way the planning commission wrote it was, uh, one per bedroom, uh, with stacked parking, and we actually looked at many, many houses in Sandbridge, um, and the resort, and Bay Colony, and many, many cases, this is not a burden to meet that requirement. Where, and I'm getting off here, but where, where it is a burden is if you have a, a townhouse in the resort and you only have two parking spaces, that's where it would be a burden. But that would go over to, I'll, I'll put Kevin, uh, under the bus here, it would go over to Kevin, Kevin would review it, uh, and it would go back, uh, it would not get approved for registration without zoning approval, but that is not-
Is he permitted to go to the BZA?
That was a yes, we're, first I pointed Kevin, and I got a yes here, right? We got a yes. All right, we got a yes, they can go to BZA, 'cause you can, you can, um, contest a decision of the zoning administrator.
Well, I, I feel compelled to complicate this just a little bit more.
And I really thank you for that.
Whatever, whatever he says.
The, 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 the bill passed, the law passed by the general assembly last year said that that registration was a purely administrative registration. So while we would refer people over to make sure that they complied with zoning, I'm not sure that we would get by conditioning the registration sign-off on complying with the zoning, we might have to do that separately. So, how's, I mean, I think you'd still have the notification, but when we start talking about, well, if zoning said no, is there a BZA appeal? There could be, but that would be solely on the zoning side, it would have nothing to do with the registration. The registration has to be accomplished.
Right, but if I could, Mr. Mayor, but, but what I'm going with is, just, just trying to figure out the logistics of it, they go to Phil's office, they register, then they, they come over and do whatever they need to do in, in planning and zoning, and if, if y'all determine that there's not enough parking, what happens then?
All right, taking a risk here, but the way we do it with business licenses, if somebody comes in for a business license, and it for some reason doesn't meet the zoning, we have this all the time, somebody wants to do a use that is not permitted in that zoning, then the zoning administrator staff says this is not approved, goes back to the commissioner, and the building, uh, the business license does not get approved. So, my oversimplification is that it would work the same way.
Okay, so then if, if, if I've got this house, I'm agreed with this comment, I cannot go to the BZA or I can't?
I, I, I'm not sure, I think, I think Barry and I need to practice getting our scripts together. Um, I think what would happen there is, I, I don't think it's like a business license.
Oh, I'm glad you came.
I think the commissioner has to issue the registration, but we would provide notice separately to the owner that you've complied with the registration requirement, but you are not in compliance with our zoning ordinance, and therefore that-
Okay, so then they could get a violation.
Yeah, yeah, if you, if you operate, that'll be a violation, we'll send you a notice of violation, and then it'll proceed from there.
Well, that's confusing.
I, I, I understand that, but, 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 and, and I-
Yeah, but, but that, that actually, it makes perfect sense to me.
We tried to make it one-stop shopping, but we're limited to a small degree in how far we can go.
Right, so, so then my other, my other question on this, kind of, and, and I agree with what a lot of folks said, Barbara, because there's no unanimity in any of the comments I get from people even within the, the same neighborhoods. I mean, I've got people that say, you know, no regulation, I've got people say outright ban and, and everything in between, and, and I think all of us have gotten these hundreds and hundreds of emails. My, my concern still goes back to preserving the, um, the quiet enjoyment of, of neighborhoods, and it kind of goes back to that whole thing about the, the violations and, and the, I just, I don't have a good feeling for, for how those are, those are set up. I, I'd really like to say this again, I'd really like to see some method whereby it could be an administrative revocation, um, at least on a short term that's appealable, so that we don't, um, have, have people have to deal with stuff for several years of problems with calling and having all these issues, not, I, I think honestly we'll probably have a lot of responsible people who, who are, are gonna be good stewards and everything, but, but there's, there's still gonna be issues, I mean, there, there is everywhere. So I just, I just want to make sure that there, there's a, something that, that's, that's more efficient than the, you know, you have to go to court a couple of times in three years in order to get something done.
Bruce, Lewis, James, then Barbara?
Mark, could the city council pass an ordinance that, that required an overlay district for, that a property had to be in an overlay district, uh, before short-term rentals could occur?
In other words, it would be, well, that's, um, so in other words, you wouldn't impose a CUP requirement, or you'd just say, you can only do it in these designated zoning classifications.
Right.
But I don't know if that can be an overlay, if that's just a new zoning classification. I need to think that through a little bit.
I mean, you, you, you don't allow, uh, a grocery store on residential zoning?
You, you could create new zoning classifications, I guess.
I think, you know, you probably could do it as an overlay too, but you'd have to think through how you wanted to do that.
Yep, I'm just saying, you know, you've got communities that may want it, and you've got communities who don't want it, and so, if you, if a community came to the council and said, you know, we'd like to have the right to do short-term rentals, we have, you go through the public hearing process, and you, you make a decision, that's all, and, and then you have the rules and regulations that apply to, uh, the, uh, how the, how, what you can do and what you can't do in those properties, and, uh, but that's not a conditional use permit, that's just whether you, whether you abide by the rules and regulations.
It would, it would, it would just be a permitted use where the overlay was.
Right, provided you live by the, by the rules, that's all.
Barbara?
Would that not be one of these special exceptions or special use permits? This, because this, this doesn't, this is-
It's not a use permit.
Special exception, though. I don't know what a special exception is.
It's a primary use within an overlay.
Or special use permit, I mean.
Because, I mean, I, I know in my district, I got a lot of people that don't want short-term rentals, and, and so, somebody would, if you had to come in for an overlay district to, and be in one before, then the community would be able to make that decision, you know?
I, I, I'm not convinced that that is or is not a special exception within the meaning of that language, and I'd like some time to look at that. I, I, I don't feel comfortable giving you a definitive answer to that today.
Okay, I'd like an answer, though.
I understand, I do.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I just, in, um, doing all the research, had come across this that's on the website for Airbnb, and, and I think you all have a copy of this, it was passed to responsible hosting in the United States, and this is put out by Airbnb, that says it's from the city of Virginia Beach. But, for example, when they talk about, uh, safety, uh, fire prevention, ensure you have a functioning smoke alarm and carbon monoxide detector, and that your property meets government safety guidelines for your area, such as international building code, which I don't think we have invoked that on s- single-family residences, but anyway. And then the next one is exits, ensure you have a clearly marked fire escape route and post a map in your home. Well, you know, originally, we had required that there be a little exit sign, I don't think it anticipated flashing lights or anything, but exit signs to mark exits, and that came out of the pla- uh, planning commission thing, but Airbnb recognizes that their host should do this, and I think, you know, I don't think it's a way out thing to require, because that's one of the things that worries me, is when you get people who are unfamiliar with a, a property, a house, and you've got a whole lot of folks that sleep at 2:00 in the morning and there's a fire, they may not, uh, all get out, if they're not familiar with the exit rates, but I just thought it was significant. Airbnb, it does include it in their suggestions. Down a little bit, it says occupancy, establish safe occupancy limits, your local government may have guidelines. So, you know, this is anticipated by Airbnb that it's the local government who probably should be saying what the safe occupancy limits are. If you look through all of these, another thing that has been questioned is, of course, they talk about permits and regulations, but I think it's the last thing in here, is this insurance question. What insurance should I get to cover my home? It says specifically as the host guarantee, Airbnb offers you our host guarantee, but note, this does not take the place of homeowners or renters' insurance. Uh, re- re- review your renters' or homeowner's policy with your insurance carrier, but then it talks about liability. Ensure you have adequate liability coverage as well as property protection. And I know this question of liability that we had in some of these has been debated, but I think it's interesting that, you know, Airbnb has these things as basic things that, that need to be covered, so I really don't think that we are out of step by addressing in the, in the requirements that we have, and I just thought that was interesting.
Okay, um, we've had some great comments and so forth, please, John.
On the one, back, back to Jim's question, if we, you said combined one and two, and we said, okay, the start, and let's, we said grandfathering everyone that, as of what day, as of day we adopted it, that would mean getting back, if someone then came in to get a license before we had made our next adoption, whatever that is, wouldn't be able to register until we resolved, because our current zoning, current zoning, as we've all said, doesn't permit short-term rentals. Our current zoning, is that correct? You've said it before, that our current zoning does not permit short-term rentals, is that true?
That is true, but it's been observed, I, I mean, it's recognized only in its non-
Correct, but once we, but once we did adopt something and grandfathered, that's for grandfathering, you don't grandfather if you don't plan on not enforcing it ever, so obviously the point of grandfathering communicates you plan going forward to have a different approach, I think that's not an unfair conclusion, so that would mean between the, if we separated those, those decisions and points in time, like the neighborhood overlay, or whatever you want to talk about, that means that someone who came in from, in the interim, you wouldn't be granting a new registration until the issue had been resolved, because your whole grandfathering was the baseline, and henceforth, to enforce your ordinance. So that someone who's in Lewis's neighborhood doesn't come in and register their home for short-term rental.
I, I think, I'm, I, I think, let me guess what Phil's gonna tell you, I think Phil's gonna tell you, I feel an obligation under state law to register them, but we would also give them notice that they did not comply with zoning, and therefore they would not be grandfathered under our zoning ordinance.
Not to amend the city attorney, but I feel an obligation under city law to register them, because there is a city tax on lodging, TOT, transient occupancy, and the fact that they do not meet the zoning requirements to operate as they do does not relieve them of their obligation to collect that tax from their patrons if they are in there doing it. In other words, zoning will have to enforce whether or not they're there and operating. I give a point of registration, a point of contact and a chronicle of their information, but they have an obligation, if they rent their house for one night or 100 nights a year, whatever, to collect that tot and remit it. So one part of the law doesn't relieve them from doing the other part.
Let me ask the other question, 'cause it gets back to, so now, just trying to walk this down, but what was grandfather really mean? I don't like communicating to the public that we're doing something that has a meaning when it has no meaning. That's a bad communication strategy, always. So that would mean that if someone came in and got that, you would now know they registered, then if we have a law that it means something, 'cause we're trying to establish a difference, we would then have to instantly go in and then what? Wait till they actually do the first rental to then prosecute under the zoning ordinances? Or would we have to, we, could we do it the minute they filed, say, you have now filed for an illegal activity, much like the people paying taxes on drug selling, which they did, and the minute they registered, they violated the zoning thing, and you could go and then prosecute under the zoning ordinance, 'cause they're actually asking and permitting to do an illegal activity on their, on their property. There's gotta be, and that's what they did with the drug people, when they made them get licenses to sell drugs, and then they prosecuted them both places, uh, if they could. But I'm just trying to figure out, what does grandfather mean? He's gonna issue it, somebody has to act to make sure that the activity doesn't take place. Well-
Well, right now, they do register, and right now, it's illegal for them to, to conduct that type of o- operation in the zoning, and, and we are responding, and we are trying to help in the council develop an ordinance, the council's being very responsive to neighborhoods, but-
I'm past, I'm past the part where you're in charge, issuing the thing, I'm past that. I'm over, once you've done what you feel you're compelled to do, that's, that's an administrative act, I got it. I'm now in the part that's our side of the roof, which is the zoning. If we're going to adopt something, no matter what we adopt, someone can still come to your office, no matter what we adopt, and say, I'm gonna conduct short-term rentals on my property, you're going to issue them that thing, no matter what our ordinance says.
We're not giving them authority to conduct the short-term rentals, we're like, we're registering them as someone who said they're going to-
I understand that, I'm not, I'm just talking about that act, that transaction could still take place, gets back to when it does take place, 'cause we can't control that part of the process, got that. But once it does take place, whatever we do, we're gonna be notified, what action will we take relative to zoning, when someone comes and registers for an activity on their property that's in contradiction to what the zoning would allow, whatever we adopt going forward, what action will the city take to preclude that activity from happening?
We, when we observe that activity occurring, we would issue a notice of violation, they would have-
30 days.
To, to cease it, or then we would issue a summons, it would then, they, they could appeal to the BZA, it would then, you would go to circuit court. So, you would issue the notice of violation when they actually violated the zoning ordinance, which is when they actually undertook the activity, not just based on, I, I, I registered so that I, I, I can do it, but when they violate, you would then go in and-
We'll make this practical, so I'm living in Wichita Point, my next door, across the street neighbor's had a big home, hasn't been able to sell it for a year, and they decide now to make a short-term rental, that's not an unrealistic forecast, right? So they come down to the city official revenues office, they get their thing, right? They go, you get notified that they've received it, they, maybe it's two months, now they start renting their home, and people know that they've, it's been not lived in, so now I come and a neighbor calls up and says, you know, there's always a helpful neighbor, they call up and they say, hey, there's somebody who's violating the, the, the short-term rental thing you just adopted. Okay, I'm thinking about the, you know, how we're gonna enforce it, so now you say, oops, you, you've confirmed that, and what the evidence that confirms that, they gotta take photos or whatever, everybody comes, you know, Gladys Kravitz at the end of the street on Bewitched, I don't know how that works, but nonetheless, you get notified of what's happening, right? And, so now we got this process, it's a, a workload, I'm sure the city manager's thinking about, oh, this is like, you know, everybody's worst nightmare, but I, but we're gonna do something, you gotta be able to enforce it, and you gotta put meat behind it, right? So now I'm walking down, I give this 30-day notice, and at some point, that repetitive notice, and I guess then you can get an injunction, maybe a judge then would inviolate, would then violate their license, until a court would be telling them, they don't have a license, and that's a whole nother issue.
They would end up with an injunction that, that if they violated, they would be in contempt of court, and there could be civil, and in some cases-
Right, so my point is, I want people to listen, that is what it's going to take to enforce any ordinance that we adopt, other than a by right everywhere. I just want people to understand, if you're going to have something, and it's gonna be meaningful, then there has to be, you know, strict, disciplined, consistent enforcement, 'cause that's what deters people from doing an activity, and if we aren't resourcing that enforcement capacity, then we really are leaving the public with a false expectation about their neighborhoods. And I'm just trying to avoid a, setting up a false expectation by what we adopt, and make people understand the mechanics of what we're buying into, just like we did with video cameras on police officers, all those, the city, all those Commonwealth attorneys we had to buy into. This has an enforcement capacity requirement, and we're gonna do this, and we need to resource the enforcement, and make it such that it's not a nightmare for the staff, or do nothing, benign neglect, I call it, just keep doing what you're doing now and look the other way.
Barbara, then I got a comment.
I could ask Mr. Moss, all right, so we do the other thing, we make it a by right everywhere, and so everybody can do it everywhere, don't we still have to enforce regulations, and don't we have to, uh-
Don't we still have to enforce regulations, and don't we have to monitor what's going on to make sure the neighborhoods are peaceable and so forth? So, don't we have enforcement either way?
I think not. A different kind of enforcement, because I think a lot of the things you looked at here aren't enforceable, and that, we have that debate when we get there. I think a lot of things we talk about, then you talk about, okay, so when you go to court with that, how successful have we been in the past? Zero. So, I'm just saying, when we get there, I think that enforcement is different, but if we get the by right everywhere, I'm happy to have that, but my, that discussion, but my thought is, the enforcement is nowhere near the same as when you have a binary violation that's easy to adjudicate. When you have these judgmental things, too much traffic, too much noise, nah, it's a, that's more iffy, that's a much more deeper litigation effort.
Jim would, and then I'm gonna speak.
But, but talking about the enforcement aspect and where you're going with this, the issue with that flyer that we saw, where there was the big party planned for, for Sandbridge, where they were clearly collecting money and that sort of thing, and it, it looked like it was not gonna be good any, anywhere around. How, how, how was that enforced? What is, what is the legal, legal way that, that that party was shut down?
Well, we'd get a complaint through 311. If, if you're asking for a scenario, if it takes place.
But, but we all saw this flyer. What I'm saying is, how was that shut down? What's the legal method that?
We went to the, our precinct captain, who was notified by the neighbor, took it and contacted the rental company, notified them, provided them a copy of that, they immediately responded and notified the renter and shut that baby down.
I would sit back, it seems to me that, it gets back to management, to me, like some of the issues you were just raising, I think a good real estate management company handles those type of things and does a good job for them, because they have a lot to lose, as does the property owner. Did you finish? I don't wanna.
Yeah, I, I can, just so, so, but legally, if the, let's say this wasn't with a management company, it was just one person who was renting out their house. How, how was that enforced?
There, there were ABC violations that were determined, that they were, they were.
Yeah, but I mean, that's, that's as it goes on, right?
But the police had a couple different ways they would deal with it. If there was a lot of noise and people, they called it a rowdy house, if they were catering without a license for ABC.
Right, but I guess, but, but yeah, I get that, but I guess what I'm saying is, that's all after there's a problem.
They dealt with it before problem.
Yeah, that, that's when the neighbors are calling, calling, you know, 911 and 311 and everything like that. What I'm trying to get at is, there's gotta be a method whereby we can stop this kind of stuff before it becomes a problem, specifically if you know this, and I, I don't know what the answer is to that, I don't know if it's.
Well, to be fair, didn't we see that just happen, though? I mean, and the real estate company contacted the police, the police were getting ready to call. And, and the, the truth of the matter is, I think a good management company is also looking after the best of their ability as to what's going on, on the internet and so forth. Also, you have neighbors.
This was discovered by a neighbor, it wasn't discovered by a real estate.
I, I, I see, you also have neighbors? I mean, I, I think there's multiple ways, and to say that one might not slip through, I'm not gonna say it, but I do think everyone earnestly tries to prevent that from happening from companies that are managed properly, and I, and I think we have pretty good evidence of that. Yes, sir.
Well, and, and under all of these proposed alternatives, when you see an ad for something like that, you would say, well, we anticipate more than, than 50 people, and under all of these ordinances, that would trigger the requirement for the, for the special event permit, and if they didn't have a special event permit, we'd tell them, you're not legally authorized to engage in this activity.
Well, and Barbara keeps pushing this, this is what I want to get to now. We, we've got this state, perhaps, law that's right around the corner, and did you just tell me the session is over?
It's in Saturday. So, something's gonna happen this week.
Yeah, and I'm gonna make this comment, and do you think this would go away if conditional use permit wasn't required at Sandbridge? I do.
Well, I hope not.
Well, I, but I, you're asking me, I mean, we're putting stuff on the table right now. And, you know, I think that this is, I hope, Barbara has worked diligently, and believe it or not, I tried to help a little bit to bring people together at Sandbridge.
And I think a lot of people came together with a good compromise.
We had one meeting here, the last meeting that was in this room was a very positive meeting, but what was it, a year ago, a year and a half ago? I don't know. And both sides were at the table, and I, I thought there was great progress. And then, it, to really say, I believe that the information that was been put out on Barbara, and all those things that were just shown, and the example of that contract not being signed, that doesn't help, help a thing. Misinformation does not help anybody try to get anything accomplished. I, I believe, and again, we don't know if we don't try, but what we have here is not good for the entire city, in my opinion, the way it stands right now. It's gonna be a detriment to the communities. You know, the opportunity of an overlay in Sandbridge, you know, if the community wants it, you know, perhaps would, you know, allow, you know, that to be more accessible for short-term rentals without a CUP, and then we can address other neighborhoods accordingly. Now, can I sit here and say that we can make that happen in Richmond? I don't know. But I know one thing, what we have here right now is, I don't, I mean, if everyone's fine with this that we have, none of you, none of you having more discussion.
But how can we make such a decision in this venue? I mean, that would take a vote to, to allow that.
There's no question.
If you want something without a, a public hearing or anything else, I don't think we can do that. Sounds like blackmail to me, too.
Especially a four-month process, that the community's gonna have to go through.
My thing to you is then, I think we're wasting a lot of time on a lot of stuff right now going through this. If this, I mean, I want y'all to tell me I'm wrong.
I said that early on, I agree with that.
That's what I said, too.
Redefines it leaves you with overlay or all, or by right, or selectively enforced.
That goes into effect, I mean, a lot of what we're talking about's not gonna matter. I'm saying maybe we shouldn't be rushing into. Yeah, I don't know how you.
I think what the mayor's trying to do is keep them from rushing.
I'm just, ladies and gentlemen, I'm grabbing for straws, I'm the first one to admit it.
Well, how do you make a commitment without a vote?
I, I don't think anyone can make a firm, yes, sir.
I, 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 I'm sorry to keep interjecting. I, I did speak.
We kinda need your help right now.
I, I, I did, I, I, I spoke with one of the members of the, of the committee today, and the information that they had was the same information that Ms. Henley was reading in her questions, that CUPs were gonna be required of every property that it was gonna have a, a, a drastic and immediate economic impact on individual citizens and on the city. And, so, I don't think they understand, I don't think this committee understood, and I don't know that the, that the body as a whole up there really understands what these alternatives do and what they do not do. So, there is, I think, the opportunity for some advocacy there, because these alternatives, you know, these alternatives, if you did two with one to follow on the backside for communities that wanted it, you really are not requiring potentially CUP. You, you're certainly not undoing any existing business, and you might be able to exempt out communities like Sandbridge if that was the will of that community.
And I guess that's where I'm saying to you, hey, there's no commitment, there's no action that's been taken, but if that can be communicated factually, does it give us a chance that this not go through? We don't know the answer to that question unless we try, if we want to try that.
If there was this information, if those folks were operating based on this kind of stuff, you know, I think that's unfair to the senators who voted that they had wrong information. I would hope that we would be able to supply the correct information to people with our explanation of what we've been through in all of this process of two and a half years of trying to address it, and, and that it in no way, I mean, these, these things that I read, I don't think are in any way reflective of what we're really doing. And if that's the information they had, or the misinformation they had, I don't think we should allow that kind of thing to prevail. That's not the way government is supposed to be operating. And to, to short-circuit our process, I mean, yeah, I don't want this to be passed and applied to the whole city. Absolutely, I don't want that to happen. But I think, I, I don't think we can make any commitments today for anything, because I think that doesn't comply with our process for government.
I certainly agree with what you just said there. We can't do anything that's a firm commitment. But I think we do have to have some communication in order to keep this from happening, you know, with them, and, and I come back and say to you, I think the biggest issue right now is the CUP at Sandbridge, and I could be totally misreading it, but I think if that were not the case, and again, I don't, you know, perhaps we could get something pulled. I don't know.
Sandbridge, who are here, can't say a word, so I guess I have to be the one to say something, but I, I just really don't think it's fair to the community not being able to, to, to express concern. I think we, as a body, as I said at the very first, I think we should say, you know, this, we were not notified that this was being done, or at least I wasn't. We had no knowledge of this, we had no opportunity to speak to anybody on the committee, committee, and have any input, as far as I know, and.
Let, let me interject, I got a call yesterday.
Oh, you did?
Yes, and it was, said, I am adding Virginia Beach, and I'm adding no CUP. The other issues were not mentioned to me. I'm open to being able to pull some things in time, but, you know, I don't think it's gonna be satisfactory, what gets pulled.
Sunday and see what happens.
Could they change it to, mention the Sandbridge community rather than the entire city, or they have to have the entire city?
I'm telling them they were gonna get thrown under the bus, so I guess that's about what's about to happen, they're gonna get thrown under the bus.
As I continue, did not do anything very well, obviously, but communicate what I think could be done, and I don't know that it can be done. I think the huge issue is the CUP at Sandbridge. If it's not required at Sandbridge, I think we have other alternatives to address the rest of the city. And that is not stating anything factual, that is a gut feeling, that could be, you know, proven wrong this evening.
Maybe a call to Senator Normant might help. You know, he is a property owner in Sandbridge, and so is Senator Peterson. They both own property in Sandbridge.
At the same time, when we're making these phone calls, we certainly want to make sure the council at least has given a little bit of guidance. I mean, I don't, I think the best thing to do is find out the best we can find and bring it back to the council. Huh?
I don't think you're gonna stop this, but, you know.
But, but then if we don't stop this, I don't know what else is, we just go with the planning commissioner's recommendation? Don't even need that, do we?
We'd help with the governor.
No, I don't think that's true.
Help me understand that, John.
Well, that just says, if you look at, read that legislation, would not, doesn't require you to change your current zoning, which, right? Right? And so, you, doesn't preclude you, so, that means, doesn't preclude you from grandfathering people, doesn't preclude that, and doesn't preclude you from either creating zoning districts or overlay districts, if you want to do something, but whatever you do, when you do that, you're creating a by right, but that's not by right across the whole city.
I think I was suggesting doing something like that that could perhaps work.
But I don't think that legislation precludes that. Do you think that legislation?
No. But, but.
It just doesn't do anything, does it?
But, but you're not gonna have the availability of a conditional use permit outside of the overlay.
That is correct. That is correct. I would agree with you on that.
How can we pick Sandbridge separate from, say, Chick's Beach, when they've got the same situations going on?
Your community, and again, I'm thinking out loud with you right now, the community could come and say, we want an overlay.
Initial use permit, I mean, that sounds like.
The north end of Virginia Beach could come in and say, we want an overlay. Am I right or wrong?
That's factually correct. I, I, I guess, I guess what I'm not, I mean, when you take the conditional, when you take the conditional use permit out of it, what, what, what you're essentially saying then is, then in all of those other areas of the city where you don't adopt an overlay, that will continue to be an unpermitted activity, and you are effectively giving, giving instruction to your zoning staff to start taking enforcement actions so that that's not allowed any, that's not allowed.
Unless you were grandfathered.
Well, but, but I don't think we're talking about grandfathering.
That, that's something that could be discussed, though. I mean, you know.
I don't think it's, the people who have been operating, I don't think it's fair to say, sorry, you, you lose your cheese, so, you know.
Does anyone else have any more bright ideas before we move on to something? Yes, sir, Barry, I'm looking for the brightest idea right now.
One of my many career-shortening comments. I, I was not, I, I clearly did not understand the process the same way as the city attorney, and our staff discussion was that we would be able to control who gets a registration by meeting with the requirements, which clearly is, is, is not correct, and I apologize that I was not aware of that. But if we, if you expect zoning to enforce after the fact registrations in a timely or expeditious manner to have real, accurate, and appropriate consequences, we have a problem. So, I don't, we are going to be working, we will be working on this, we will try to figure this out, but if we have to give notices of violation, wait 30 days, and then we go back and they don't have to be renting that day, and then we go back, and, I mean, it is gonna be, I, I am, I am confused, and I don't know if my zoning administrator's the same way, I'm confused on how we are going to effectively enforce this. So, I just wanted to tell you, tell you that.
And as the city manager, I would tell you that without citation and court findings, you won't be compliant with what the state law has established with regards to really shutting down non-compliant short-term rentals.
Well, the, the, the state code provision says you can revoke the registration for any, for, for more than three violations. It doesn't say what time period, it doesn't say that those violations have to be founded, it's very broad and ambiguous.
Okay, so, so we could do the administrative type, type thing that I talked about.
Except that I'm waiting for the, for the due process challenge to come when we try to do that, but yes.
Go to court and find out.
Shannon?
Remind me again, why did we lump short-term rentals and event houses in the same thing? Because to me, it seems that these event homes are the ones that are causing most of the problems, so why did we lump them all together? Seems like it would have been much cleaner had we done them separately.
Because they're all, because they're all rentals of real, of residential real property over a period of less than 30 consecutive days, and therefore, they, they fall within that definition.
I get that, but you've got, you know, your five or 10 people that are having these tour bus parties that cause the problems, that these other 90 people may not be causing any problems. It just seems that we're muddying it by lumping them all together, when I know we're probably trying to make it simpler, but it's, to me, that's what's confusing the matters more.
Any other comments?
Can we fix that?
I agree, Shannon.
Thanks, Tim.
Put this party that almost happened that.
Twenty-five hundred square. And I think the controls on the bigger houses, they are much better than. I think the controls on the bigger houses are much better than they do.
Well, the controls might be better, but the controls don't stop tour buses and porta-potties.
Yeah, they do.
They do?
Yeah.
Well, they haven't been working on.
Yeah, okay.
All right, we'll be back. Anything you need, let us know. Phil will fix it all.
I think we need a lot. Okay, we'll move on. We're still getting out here at six.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we are going to begin our, setting the groundwork for your 2019 budget with what we do normally during the month of. budget with what we do normally during the month of March, and we're going to start one week early, is to begin our CIP briefing so that you all get a foundation with regards to what that portion of your annual budget is. And up first will be our facilities engineer, Captain Tom Nicholas, and he'll provide you the CIP for buildings.
So it's a little hard to go right after that?
Yeah.
But I.
Oh, Ben, we really sure missed you. You're a lot of help today. We're glad to have you back.
Thank you.
We, we look forward to your presentation, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, Mayor Sessom, Vice Mayor Jones, distinguished members of council, Mr. Hanson, and guests. Again, as you said, I'm Tom Nicholas, facilities engineer with Department of Public Works. Joined today by two of my teammates, Mr. Barry Shockley, our director of facilities management, and Mr. Kevin Jensen, our director of facility design and construction.
We're welcome, everybody.
I'll give you a quick overview of where we are in our currently approved and appropriated capital improvement program for buildings and assets, and show you what the potential projects are coming up for your decision in the next few months. So first and foremost, I'd like to, you know, my priority list every day starts with making sure we're taking good care of the buildings that we have. This slide identifies the nine CIPs that are dedicated to building maintenance programs. Just for a matter of perspective, this funding enables us to maintain 200, or 370 buildings, 427 pump stations, we maintain the exteriors of those, 230 shelters, which are managed by the Parks and Recreation Department, 59 miscellaneous structures, and approximately 4.7 million square feet of, of buildings. This slide gives us a little more indication of how well we're doing. The top red line, which we started in 2012, shows how our backlog of maintenance and repair would have grown had we not provided capital improvement funding at the council level for sustained restoration and modernization of our buildings. The bottom green line is the funding that you have provided to us over the last six, seven years, and it has everything in it except heritage buildings, intermediate care facilities, and the convention center. There's a lot of money set aside for those, but I don't want to lump that money and those deficiencies into this chart because it sort of skews it. So the blue line in the middle is our actual, actual backlog of maintenance and repair. As a result of your support, we're sitting right around $40 million in, in backlog of maintenance and repair, and a lot of folks would look at that and go, oh, my gosh, that's a lot. It's really not. We have about $900 million in plant replacement value if, if we were to buy everything again. And when you look at $40 million divided by 900, you get what's called the facility condition index, and it comes out to be .044. Anything below .05 is, is really good. So the funding you're providing is, is doing its job, and we're, there's a flat line on that, and that's really what I look for. We're not growing in our deficiencies, and we're not, we're not bringing them down. We're doing a nice job of, of maintaining our assets. Some of the things that we do with that money, just so you know the difference between specific projects and capital improvement for maintenance, central plant cooling tower replacement, this was one that we finished in April to put new cooling towers on our central plant, which serves 17 buildings here at the municipal center. Similarly, we just replaced the emergency power transfer switch at the juvenile detention center, again, to give juvenile detention center the ability to stay up when we have Dominion events. Again, this is a maintenance CIP-type activity. Great Neck Library Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning, we just replaced five of their new rooftop units, again, keeping that facility pleasant on the inside. That, that's a good example of a maintenance activity. And one that, I, I'll tell you, we're all really happy about. You know, last October, literally October of 2016, I sat in front of spread and, and proposed that we purchase the former Adult Learning Center from Virginia Beach City Public Schools for three and a half million dollars and convert it to a headquarters facility for emergency medical services and emergency communications and citizen services, or 911-311. You approved that purchase, and you allowed us to use 1.66 million dollars in CIP dollars to do that restoration. In November of 2017, we opened that facility just 13 months after it became an idea, which, which is phenomenal. If you haven't had the opportunity to be there, please make it a point to go see it. It's really a nice facility, and I'll be talking in a minute or two about a couple of other things we want to do there. There are 19 building construction or renovation projects in the currently authorized Buildings and Assets Capital Program. As you can see, though, only seven of these are seeking funding in fiscal year 19. The majority of them are underway, and they've been, all the funding has previously been provided. Let's, let's take a look real quick at each one. Energy improvements, one that you funded for us last year. We've done some great things with that initial year's worth of money. We did an energy audit at the Virginia Aquarium, which really was a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of work, but led to about 500 pages of energy opportunities that exist in that facility that will feed energy-saving projects at the aquarium for a long time. We've done five major LED light, lighting retrofits, and, and continue to work on our programmable thermostat program across the city so that we can control temperatures a little better than we have been. In the coming year for energy, again, we're doing lighting LED retrofits in, in several buildings here at the municipal center and several out in the community, and a, a couple of energy audits, the big one being at the correctional center, which again helps us identify opportunities to change out equipment to save money in the future. Housing Resource Center, great project, project that's coming to conclusion. It's a 62,000 square foot facility that I know Housing and Neighborhood Preservation is going to come back on the 20th of March and, and talk to you in detail about the program for that. From our perspective, we will finish construction in June, and that facility will open this summer. And we were just there yesterday morning for a couple of hours with some other folks that hadn't seen it before. And again, if you'd like to see that, let us know. It really is a fine facility, and it's going to make a big impact on the community. ArcFlash, you, you've seen my horrid slides on ArcFlash? None of that this year, just to tell you that the ArcFlash program is alive and well and, and going along. We currently have really 13 panels that by early April would be done, an additional eight during this summer. We'll get eight to 10 a year done, and by the summer of 2021, this program will go away, and all of our electrical panels within the city will be ArcFlash compliant, and we're not going to be working at risk anymore. Marine Animal Care Center, most of you are, are very familiar with this. This is the facility that goes adjacent to the Public Works Alice Creek Dredge Facility and replaces our leased facility back on Norfolk Avenue. Design is complete on that. The solicitation is out. I think we close on March 13th, and so we will be seeing bids, hoping to start construction then with a notice to proceed in May to finish in December of 2019, and that will enable a planned opening facility about six months later by the time they get it equipped and ready to go. Police Fourth Precinct, again, on that one, design is done. We solicited a construction contractor, opened bids in December, picked a winner, McKenzie Construction, and we are in the process right now of issuing the notice to proceed, and we will start in March, again, with a planned facility opening of fall of 2019. Coastal Conservation and Outdoor Adventure Park, this CIP's been around for a while. We did a lot of things down by the aquarium to improve the atmosphere there. There is only one aspect remaining, and that is the construction of a north overlook on Alice Creek, and that actually will go to solicitation in April. That finishes up then this calendar year, and probably this time next year, I, I will be standing here telling you that the CIP is closed.
And we need a volunteer once it's completed. You know, I did the last one, so someone else is in line, okay?
Yeah. Kids are after me to do that. Two projects that we have tied together contractually, this one and the next one I'll get to. This is the renovation of the existing Marsh Pavilion, the south building. It's a complete renovation. Design will complete on this in August of 2018. We will solicit in September for a construction contractor with a construction notice to proceed next January, again, to finish up in the fall of 2020 and open in December of 2020. There's about a million four in the FY19 budget request to finish this out, and it ties with this one quite closely, which is the construction of the veterinary clinic. Brought those together so that the impact on the south part of the aquarium is, is not as gross. You know, if we had done two separate projects, we would have had a heck of a time shutting things down, opening things up, two separate contractors on the site. So we have combined these into one project. Again, design completes in the fall of this year with construction solicitation notice to proceed in January of next year, and about 18 months later, in the fall of 2020, both of these will be open, and the south end of the aquarium will have the renovated Marsh Pavilion and the veterinary clinic, and it'll be terrific. And, and then really the Marine Animal Care Center, just up the road, will be up and running by then, too. Thoroughgood House Visitor Center, this is really a nice place. If, if you haven't been out to that, I, I encourage you to do that. We finished the construction in November, working right now with museums to fill that facility with appropriate artifacts so that when people go through that, they get the appropriate experience. But we also did a lot of improvements to the walkways and to the grounds and to the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system that supports the Thoroughgood House itself. It really is a different place than it was before, so please, if you get the opportunity to get out there, do so. 302-5, Building 2 Electrical Upgrade, not one that's too sexy, but one that's pretty doggone important in that we're trying to take a building that was built in 1979, replace the electrical system so that we don't end up with, with major problems in that building like we have been experiencing in this building. That is not an asbestos-laden building, so we're, we're not worried about anything like that. But we are in design on this right now to require removal and replacement of the main switchgear and electrical power infrastructure within the building and bring it all up to modern standards. We'll go out for construction in September of 18 for this. December, we'll issue a notice to proceed, and it takes about, it's just, just about nine months' worth of work.
Can I ask a question on that before this?
Please.
While you have the, while you're doing the wiring, I guess you're upgrading the wiring as well in the building, is that correct?
Yes.
While you're doing that, will you have the opportunity then to upgrade the IT infrastructure of the building as well at the same time if you're already having the walls and stuff apart, or is all that stuff in trays in the ceiling?
Right now, that's all in trays in the ceiling.
Okay, thank you.
Correctional Center, Master Control Upgrades, this is a project for the, for the sheriff at the Correctional Center. Really came in two phases. The first part was to upgrade their, their existing video surveillance systems, you know, they, they really had VHS tape kind of system, and, and that's being, has been upgraded. That finished in June of 2017. Phase two is for an improved intercom, real-time tracking, door control type system, again, so that those running the correctional facility have better control of what's going on in that facility. That is a PPEA process that we are working through with the sheriff's department and the city attorney and the purchasing office in order to select the vendor. That's where we are right now for, for part two. And I think once we get that selected, it's about a year to, to get that new system in Central Plant Generator, this one's been a long time coming, and it's a really big deal. As you know, our central plant services 17 buildings on the municipal center campus with hot and chill water. When we have a power outage and that facility is not running, we're not providing any heat or any cooling to any of the facilities on the municipal center, and that's problematic. So we will get an emergency generator in here. We are in design on that right now. Again, probably about a year from now, we will solicit for and pick the construction contractor to do that, to go to work in March of 2019 and be done in October of 2019. So we're about 18 months away from having a capability that we really should have had for a very long time here.
I assume this is going to be natural gas, I assume?
No.
The generators?
No. It'll be fuel oil, not natural gas.
Hmm. Another day, I'd like to know your, why you, why you chose that. That is certainly contrary to the industry standard to go, is that because you're going to have big 10,000 gallon diesel tanks and give you larger term, and you're trying to protect against loss of pressure, or?
I'll have to get back to you on that. I mean, there's really, the, the preference of fleet, which controls all of the generators in the city, is to stay with diesel oil fueling. They had some concerns about the unreliability of, of natural gas lines, but I'm not the expert on that, so we'll, we'll put a paper together for you.
Thank you.
Associated with this, but it's not in the CIP package you're looking at, is, is a generator for the Correctional Center. As you know, Correctional Center has three buildings, A, B, and C. Building C, the most recent, had a whole house generator put on it so that when there's a power outage, Correctional Center, Building C is up. A and B, the two older buildings, didn't, so all you get really is emergency power. We got a grant, and the Office of Emergency Management was extremely helpful in helping us get a FEMA grant for $500,000 and change to put in, replace the generator there, so we upgraded the 300 KW generator to 500 KW generator. That is done, the new generator is there. Now we're working with our designer as to how much of the load from Building A and B we can take and put on that. We're encouraged that we're going to be able to get a substantial parts of A and B on this generator, so when we have a power outage, not only do we have hot and cold water coming into the Correctional Center to heat it and cool it, we will also have power within the building for lights, elevators, cooking, all of the things they need to do to service the population.
We might not get a chance later. I assume that when we do the elevation, these generators are, we're pushing them up three feet above what we think the flood, 100-year flood plain is, so these will be, all be elevated?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Fire EMS station, Burton Station, this facility is currently in design, and design will complete in June of 2018. We are prepared to go out with a construction contract advertisement in July. I put two little asterisk dots there because we're coordinating that with every other thing that's going on in Burton Station. Right now, that looks like it's going to work, but we're not going to go running off on our own, that's to say, to say the least. That would enable us to have substantial completion in December of 2019 with a facility opening in, in January of 2020. So again, less than two years from now, Burton Station Fire Station could be open up and running.
Remind me the location of this, Lewis?
It's right off, off of Burton Station on the projected Tolliver Drive.
So the road's got to be put in?
Yeah.
Yes. The road has to go in, the utilities have to go in, pump station has to go in. That's what we're coordinating with.
Is this what it's going to look like?
Yes, that's a rendering.
John?
You know, given that we look for these people to be part of our resiliency to storms, I'm, I'm questioning, because I'm just looking, when we look at building, buildings on our facilities, those are the very type of roof lines we try to avoid because that's nothing but a wing with the air gets underneath it. So unless that's being built to about CAT four standards, that, that roof will not be staying on. That is a, just an uplift torque factor on that building. I'm just sharing that observation, and if someone hasn't looked at that, that for an emergency building that should survive and be most survivable against, that seems to be contradict good design thought. Just a, just an observation.
I, I assure you, we've been through that with a structural engineer, and then they have certified and stamped that they meet all of the criteria that they need to meet.
I'd just like to know what the CAT standard that was built to. C2, and that's my concern.
That's our standard.
I know, but my concern is, by expressing a concern, that for emergency buildings, that you would want to be resilient and survive, you might like to think that you might want that to be a higher standard. I'm just saying, what we practice, I'm just surprised because these are the places you have to count on to do lots of stuff, and you're building it for that standard. I could see it for an office building, but this is an emergency source building. Maybe it's not the, the right standard, just an observation.
Got it.
Is this a pre-engineered building?
No.
Kind of looks like one, okay.
Commonwealth Attorney Building Renovations, so the police body camera program sparked the need for the Commonwealth attorney to have additional staff. And in particular, it's 13 new staff, seven attorneys, four paralegals, and two admin staff. They need space in the basement of the Judicial Center, and so the area that used to be the cafeteria, you approved a CIP last year for a million and a half dollars for us to gut that, and, and really what that enables us to do is bring people up from, I think it's the, the witness area. The victim-witness area comes up and occupies this, and then the new 13 Commonwealth attorney staff that, that really process a lot of the legal side of the body camera program go down there. And this will be done in May and open in July of this year.
Is that scalable? Does that represent the max density for that space? I'm only mentioning that because of the General Assembly legislation, which now sets a staffing ratio for every so many police officers, you've got to have so many attorneys, so I'm just trying to.
Our body worn camera funding and FTE allocation is based on 1 to 50. It's our Commonwealth attorney, Colin Stolli, that's actually spearheading that conversation up, and, and we're setting the precedent for the right resourcing to make this program. We're a little behind some of the early adopter jurisdictions, but we are the benefactor of the lessons learned and the right sizing. So we're stepping into this with full knowledge of what it takes to support.
So this is a scalable space?
Everything's scalable.
I meant was, but this accommodates more people than what's specified here, that's what I'm asking, is within the spaces are margin as we hire additional officers and therefore have to hire more attorneys, is that space?
Yes.
For example, if we hired 55 police officers for all the elementary schools, they're still officers, and they would count, and so we would be hiring more. I'm just asking, does the space as we have it, it's just yes or no, it's okay, but does it have margin to absorb additional staffing, is what I'm asking?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
City Hall Replacement, in the new city hall, you've, you've heard me talk to you a number of times on this. The request in this year's budget is to take the second half of the design money and the construction money that was in 20 and 21 and push it all up into 19 because we are are in full swing on design. I will be back next Tuesday to meet with you to talk through the space program requirements for city council itself in in a small working meeting with with Mosley Architects. We'll also be back in April to show you the conceptual design, and we'll be back in May to show you the schematic design so that you see this unfold. But we're going to finish design in this calendar year and be ready in the spring of 2019 to solicit a construction contractor in order to break ground and and be in a new building in the summer, fall of 2021.
Barbara?
The Commissioner of Revenue and the Treasurer are still planning to be in this new building.
Absolutely.
And I'm assuming, I would really like for the two of them to be present at our meeting next week, so we can also hear their concerns and and make sure that we are coordinating.
But we, we have done program reviews with both of them already, so we have met with them as as an elected body and and gone through all of their space requirements. We need to do that with each of the occupants in the building, and then we start to lay out the adjacencies. So they've, they've had two times of programmatic meetings with us, and then a review just several weeks ago with Mosley and with Kevin Jensen and Barry Shockley.
Well, we have the benefit of that. I, I can foresee that we get into this project and we suddenly are hearing that, you know, we've overdone something or something. I would like to make sure that they are very much a part of this and and everything is is according to how they would like to have it be.
I will invite them, Ms. Henley.
Thanks.
And, and they may share their thoughts about their comfort. What Tom's trying to say is, we've really worked hard with them, but we will reassure you and invite them.
I would like to hear it directly from there.
I will.
We do need to spend a focused amount of time with you, though, on council chambers and on this room and on the issues of what office spaces you would or would not like us to have for you in this building. You know, so that's one of the things we want to nail down and and get a consensus from, so that we can finalize the size of the box.
Thank you.
Beach Maintenance?
Excuse me, John?
At the appropriate time in the closed session, I'd like to get a briefing when the, when the right time comes on what the security aspects are in place for that building, at the appropriate time.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Beach Maintenance Facility Replacement, again, one of the absolute worst condition facilities in the city is the Beach Maintenance Facility down at 14th, 15th and Park. If you haven't been there and you want to see how some of our employees work in bad conditions, that's the building. It is in the program. It's out in fiscal year 23 right now, so it is moving itself along. We are looking for 12 acres in the oceanfront area in order to site this building, which will be a challenge, but we're committed to work through that, and we'll get to it in time.
Do you think we are really going to find 12 acres at the oceanfront?
Perhaps not 12 contiguous acres, but there are, there are possible ways we can store some of the equipment on certain pieces of property and operate from other pieces and maybe use a couple of pieces of property to solve the problem. But yeah, one, one big 12 acre thing, I, I agree, it's going to be, we can't get too far away, or it makes the whole beach maintenance impossible. So, thank you.
On that, because I have seen some communities which are more land constrained than we are have put, it might sound strange, but they end up, I won't call it structured parking, but they build very high decks underneath for big vehicles, and then they put the offices up on top, and basically you might think it was a parking garage by its appearance, but these, police systems like that, and Hawaii is a good example, where land is not plentiful, but it isn't inexpensive, but I'm not saying, but I'm just saying, I'm not saying I'm endorsing, I'm just saying, but if you can't find, and you're trying to do something functional that works, sometimes, you know, you got, you got a, like, sometimes it's hard to build a 500 square foot apartment than a 1500 square foot, because it takes a lot more thought process to do everything in.
Anywhere we would park such an industrial operation will, will rear its adjoining neighborhood and tunnels to impacting maybe a wooded area or something that they've grown accustomed to enjoying, and so there's a lot of sensitivity. However, we have an industrial operation in the middle of, you know, a residential neighborhood, and so it's, it's one of our original Big 13 that we identified in 2006.
And it is the facility from which we keep our boardwalk and our oceanfront pristine, which makes everybody love the beach. So it's, it's, it's a big deal that we do this right.
No question about that.
The Emergency Operations Center Space Renovations, last year, we put in a project for two and a half million dollars to do some renovations there. Only $500,000 in funding was available, and so we have done a lot of work there on technology improvements, the graphic, the gray areas, the top part is the current Emergency Operations Center room, the bottom two are the Joint Information Center and the Future Planning Cell. If you haven't been down there too, and while we've, we've reoriented the rooms, a lot of IT equipment is in the process of going in, and it really changed the way we do business there. Last year, you gave us the first of two installments of funding for Virginia Beach Public Library Transformation. Phase one was Kempsville, Bayside, Princess Anne, and Central Library, a lot of interior architectural renovations, a lot of new furnitures, fixtures, and equipment, and some electrical and HVAC work. A request for the second portion of the funding in 19 takes care of Great Neck, Oceanfront, and the Punggol Blackwater Libraries. One that's out in the future, I think it's also in fiscal year 23, is replacement of the escalator at the Judicial Center. If you've been in there, people only, people move up and down the, the four floors on the eight escalators. They still trip two to three times a day. We actually have an electrician who's just full time there resetting all escalators. They have to be replaced, funding is in place to replace them. We're just a couple of years away from from getting to that. One CIP that is closed now, but it's, it was a nice one to work with at the aquarium. In October of this year of 2017, we finished the Chesapeake Bay Aquarium renovation, and the facility opening was in October. Again, I encourage you to get into the aquarium and see that. It was a really nice piece of work, and it was a fun project. Couple now that we worked on that aren't in this CIP. Kempsville Rec Center, facility opened in in July of 2017, and we certainly enjoyed working with Parks and Rec on that. I'll be back, I'm sure, when Chad Morris talks a bit more about those projects. Parks and Rec Admin Offices Relocation, we just completed construction on that, well, Friday. Friday was when we got our certificate of occupancy. The Parks and Rec Department did an absolutely stellar job of moving out of Building 21, and and they are there already in that building, and they're moving out of citywide. So this facility will open in March with a soft opening, sort of as the month goes. Other projects, we did two projects for lighting improvements at the boardwalk. The first was the connectors for, from Second Street to 18th Street, finished up in May of 17, just after I talked to you. And then Project 2B went from 19th Street to 14th, 40th Street, and that finishes up in May. At that point, we'll have done the whole boardwalk and all the connector parks with the upgraded LED lighting, and it really changed the appearance of the oceanfront.
Later day, could you just inform us the utility bill savings of that?
Sure. This slide just quickly touches on the assets that are in the buildings and asset CIP. You know, things like fire apparatus, the fire training center, training equipment, there's a landfill project, and then public safety equipment and police department helicopter. I will be the first to admit that I am not an expert on any of these CIPs, but between the respective public safety department and city manager and management services, they have details on what's to be purchased from those. Now, so this year's target, there were about 34 above target requests, which is a little down from last year, pretty typical, though. Three of them are, and I'll touch on them real quick, are requests to increase funding to existing programs. The first one was for building maintenance, various buildings rehab and renewal. In fact, the first slide I showed you, toward the end of last year, when we finished the budget process, it became necessary to find some money for CIP 7053, which was Chub Lake, Bradford Lake. And so Management Services, in order to find those funds, borrowed $1 million in '21 and '22 from building maintenance, and so part of this program asks for reconsideration of restoring that funding so that in '21 and '22, we don't have a dip in building maintenance funds. City Hall Replacement, I already talked about that, but again, in 19, there was about two and a half million for design, and then there was 20 million in '20 for construction in '21 and '21, pulling that all forward so that we've got the authorization all in one year, so we can proceed with the construction. Not asking for any more money, just asking for it to be reliable. Councilman?
I could, not today. I know how we financed it, but I'd like to know when and how much, after we made the commitment to spend the money, we issue debt later, we use our own cash. I'd like to know in what years the debts are being issued to be, to refurbish the fund that we use and the amount.
Okay.
What's the debt, what's the debt financing plan? Thank you.
Also, Beach Maintenance Facility is part of the funding for 7053 Chub Lake. The last year of that project actually borrowed $1,084,000 from this particular CIP as well, and so we have a request into the program to restore that funding so that we would have the full funding we anticipate needing for the Beach Maintenance Facility. On the new submissions, new requests, this one I drafted up myself, I'm asking for money for CIP project planning, adaptive reuse of existing buildings, condition assessments, and space planning. We don't spend enough time thinking about how we use our buildings and how we should use our buildings and how we might modify our buildings so that we can be perhaps a little denser, a little smaller, a little cheaper. And also, a lot of times I come to you with CIP projects that were developed by departments and cost estimates that were put together quickly, and I don't think that's fair. So for about $250,000 a year, I can start to chip away at those problems and and answer some questions for you with a little more professionalism.
Would that include, when we move into the new city hall, and then this building is then worked, and people vacate the spaces that they're now in, will this include, how are we reducing our footprint, that the buildings that they're now in, these little houses and these little brick buildings, of demolishing those, so that we're actually reducing our footprint rather than being like the schools, they empty a school out and they just occupy it with more people?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's, and I'll talk to you a little bit about replenishing Building 1, but I don't really have the ability to answer those questions for you today, so that's not fair, and that's what this would, that's what I would do with this.
Okay, I'm just asking, what would be the activity? I got an idea, thank you.
One of the things we found out when we renovated the, the former Adult Learning Center and created the new EMS headquarters was, because of the size and functionality of it, it actually makes an excellent backup emergency operations center, which is not something we had envisioned for it when we did it. All that it needs is an emergency generator. So if we put an emergency generator on that building, we could move the Building 30 emergency operations functions, the 911, 311 functions there, and continue to operate in a contingency if we had to.
I can, I can advise the council that we pull that all the way forward in your 19 budget. This is going to be our backup 911 center. We, he just put the wedge out there, and we had to wrestle it out and balance the budget and do all the CIP things. The puts and takes had to consume this.
Law Enforcement Training Academy Replacement, again, a number of you may know that Virginia Beach City Public Schools is interested in selling the property upon which that sits. We lease that facility right now from schools, along with pathways and the treasurer's office that are on that property. So we have this project, it's been around for a while, to replace it with a new facility at the end of Leroy Drive. If you drive to the end of Leroy Road, there used to be a police training range down in there, which we're working with the state right now on some remediation activities to clean that up, and then we will be putting together a plan to design and build a new law enforcement training academy at that location. Public Works Stormwater Facility Replacement, probably a close second to what's going on down at the oceanfront with Beach Maintenance. We have 11,000 square feet of old portable trailers where Public Works Stormwater operates at Dam Neck, and that needs to be corrected. So we've put together a project, again, it sits in the out years right now, to consider replacing those antiquated trailers with with real permanent facilities. Euclid Yard, the home of Parks and Rec Landscape Maintenance for servicing the western side of the city, Public Works Operations and Highways for salt and sand, and Public Works Fleet for servicing and refueling all of the public safety vehicles that operate in the western part of the city. We have this project, which would, as it's priced and set up right now, replace the facilities that are there on that piece of property, but if another piece of property were to be found in the western part of the city that was perhaps a better location for those functions, we would move it. Parks and Rec Construction Yard, this is the old Nike missile site, so we've gotten Parks and Recreation out of, you know, the citywide offices, which were pretty old facilities. The next step is to get the Parks and Rec Construction Yard, which is the, really the playground maintenance equipment facility, out of that location. Part of it can go over by Parks and Rec Landscape Services right now, and then we would be looking for a small piece of property to get the rest of the functions out, but for, for about $8 million, we can get off of that Nike site and allow that to be repurposed.
Can we, given all the things that have been there, is that brownfield land because of the missile site, or could we put that in a marketplace and sell it?
We, we can't. The, the tubes are filled with concrete. We envision our ten to take place next to Boney Plantation, I think, and, and I think that the neighbors are all very familiar, and we've made a commitment to keep that zoning in place.
The next two are studies. The first one is a continuation of the aquarium, did a very extensive planning effort in 2011 to develop a master plan. They have a need for a parking garage across General Booth from the main aquarium building. We also have had discussions with the Camp Pendleton Virginia Army National Guard leadership there, who have some desires to relocate their gate, and so we're going to start to take a look at how we could better use the parking lot across the street from the aquarium, perhaps consolidate it, perhaps put a garage there to see whether or not we can or can't meet both the needs of those organizations. Similarly, police and our other armed deputies are being trained right now at Academy, the weapons training facility down in Moyac. That is an expensive lease, however, it provides a very broad scope of services to those that train there. Public Safety has asked us to do a study to see whether or not we could relocate any or all of that to within the confines of the city of Virginia Beach, and so it would take us a, a bit of time to do that, so we've asked for $250,000 to study that.
I guess the study is going to let us know whether or not.
Absolutely, no one has asked us to leave. There's always concern, because we don't control that facility, that it might be an option that goes away, and so we would want to know what would we do if, in fact, that Well, all of the requests that Direction Management Services go out into '24, and then if you support them, we bring them forth as far as you want. So if we could look at this with money in, in 1920, I, I know the police department is, is currently working with this particular range to establish a new lease facility, you know, they're not, we're not walking away from this, and I certainly know because of who trains there now, that facility's not going away anytime soon. You know, it's, it's not there for us. And so I, I think they just want to make sure that there's not better options on our own land.
I would, I would caution us to spend a whole lot of money on this, because, and frankly, most of the staff, senior staff wasn't here when we went through this back in 2003 timeframe, and say that there was opposition in the southern part of the city when you're putting it mildly, and there were, it was, it was a very, very contentious issue, and frankly, there's, the only place to do this is going to be in the southern part of the city, because they need that much land and rain chain and everything, this extraordinarily expensive process. You know, I, I was involved with, with this whole selection, and frankly, all the police officials who were involved with it have all, have gone away. So it's, it's a, I would just say, I'd be really cautious about spending a ton of money on this, because I, I don't know that we're going to be able to.
I'll just advise the council, they didn't get pulled forward. I kind of feel the same way, thank you very much.
It'll all return, Lee.
Well, we didn't do a real good job negotiating. We're old.
Next project that's near and dear to all of us is what to do with this building after we build the new city hall, and so I, I have this in there as a slide marker. I am not prepared at this point to tell you who should go in there, or where they would come from, and what buildings would be torn down, and what savings would be, and I owe you that. So before we make a decision on what to do with this, I just put it into the program, knowing that it's out there, haven't forgotten about it, certainly not building a new city hall without thinking about it. We have people developing a program for a couple of departments that might go in there and see what could be fit, but that other piece of, well, where do they come from, what gets torn down, what savings are there, what historic preservation issues are there with some of those buildings, that all needs to be flushed out and discussed before we make a decision, and we'll get on that.
I have one other question. I would just ask, again, I'm not doing this, I have a question, we look really strong at leaning down the, the money that we spend on the, not so much the planning and study things, you know, you know, I know I've driven out people, but you're using like sort of people that wouldn't help people, you know, just make sure that you're, you're not, that we're not just paying like a lot of paper product.
Absolutely.
And I, and I know, but that just seems like a lot, 500K, but maybe, I don't understand what 500K represents, but at a later date, you can explain it to me. what 500K represents, but at a later date, you can explain it to me.
Public Safety Building Renovations, so one of the next buildings on the municipal center that is in dire need of renovation is Public Safety Building. You know, really, each of the floors, the beauty of that building versus this building, it's not set up the same way in heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, it doesn't have the asbestos issues, so it can be renovated a floor at a time. But again, some of that planning dollars that I'll take if I get it, is to reconfirm the program and make sure that we fit in that building, and that building continues to work as the Public Safety Building. And if it does, we need to move forward relatively soon here at the municipal center with renovation of that building. Correctional Center Renewal and Replacement, again, this one has been in the program or been in the system for a number of years. There's a number of things that need to be refreshed within the Correctional Center, showers, laundry, kitchen equipment, flooring, visitation space, things like that, and they're all lumped together in this CIP for $13.7 million that would mean a lot to the sheriff.
So it is renewal, not replacement?
It is renewal, it is refurbishment of existing facility.
If I would be good to take the replacement part off the slide.
Yeah, 13 million, I don't think so.
Okay, so yeah, it's just wording, but I, like, the kitchen equipment will be replaced, it's that kind of replacement, not the facility itself. We have requests from Fire and EMS for a number of stations, this one is for Landstown Princess Anne Commons, which really would service that portion of town. We have a request from voter registrar for a new facility of approximately 16,000 feet. They have also sent us a letter saying, can we perhaps lease a facility to help them get out of 14, and so we are working with city manager and the registrar on what to do.
How many feet? 16,000 feet for $8 million?
We're not going that direction, just thought everybody stay in the chair. We have put lease money in, we put lease money in the operating budget, we're going to, we've got a lot of shopping centers, they've got a lot of square footage that's available, there's some very low rents out there, we're actively engaged in looking at a long-term lease and move them out of that building, create the capacity that we need for that.
Jim, what did you have, something?
Well, yeah, because I've spoken with members of the electoral board, and they've been pinging on me about this for a couple of years now, they're saying that they really, really need this space because of the new requirements, new regulations, and that sort of thing, and they have to have secure storage, it's not 16,000 square feet of office.
Right, we have storage on Leroy right now, we have storage for them in the old Pendleton building, and we have offices in Building 14, so it consolidates that.
Much reduced, I know, I know, would you hurry up, please?
Yeah, I know. Request real quick from EOC Space Renovations, again, emergency operations would like to complete some of the work that wasn't funded last year, so they have resubmitted a package two. Fire would like a Princess Anne Commons Tidewater Community College Fire EMS station. Fire Resource Management would like a city-owned resource facility to replace the facility that we lease. Fire EMS would like an Indian River Road inner facility traffic area fire station to help service below the green line, and they would like Fire EMS stationed at North End in addition to what we're doing at Fourth Story. And then they have a request in for each of the Fire EMS stations to put in closed-circuit television and door access system at each of the stations.
I thought that was already a project.
Correctional Center has put in a request to put a canopy over the existing recreation yard to prevent drone invasion?
Drone delivery.
Drone delivery.
That courtyard's not, no, no way.
And again, thank you to you for your.
Thank you for a great presentation, really appreciate it. Folks, we're going to, Louis has got to leave, he'd like to hear the Asheville Park update, I'm going to move that next, if that's okay. The other thing in opportunities zones, we have time limits on when they have to be submitted, so I'm going to say opportunities zones after Asheville Park.
Okay.
I'm not so sure we'll get to assessments, bike ways, and trails or pending planning, because we're going to be out here at 6:00.
As you wish, Mayor. So Tom Leahy's got seven charts on an Asheville update.
Thank you, Tom, glad to have you.
Good afternoon. Okay, well, let's get right to it. Quick chronology in '05-'06, city council conditionally rezoned Asheville Park, five villages, 453 acres, 499 lots. Village A, Willshire Village, went to construction and developed. Few years, a couple years later, the housing bubble collapsed, the subdivision went into foreclosure, and around the same time, the city assumed ownership of the streets, utilities, stormwater system, all that public infrastructure. Few years later, HomeFed acquired the foreclosed properties, Village B, known as Rainier, went to construction, and around that same time, after HomeFed acquired the property, stormwater problems were discovered. The full extent of those were not known at the time, there's a very complicated stormwater system out there, it was assumed that there was something defective, a collapsed pipe or a plugged pipe, but took, it was all underwater, and it was just not, the extent of the problems were not known. In 2014, and again in 2015, HomeFed approached the Planning Commission and put in an application to alter the conditional rezoning the council had approved in '05. The Planning Commission recommended both of those, but city council deferred both of them indefinitely. So in January 2016, we all know what happened, Julie and Matthew caused record flooding, Public Works had already initiated modeling and engineering studies to find out what was wrong with the stormwater system, and in 2017, they got the results of that study and found out that everything was wrong with that stormwater system. The inlets, the pipes, the ponds, the pump stations, the canals, the outlet, all too small. So the model and engineering study looked at four primary alternatives, A through D. All four alternatives assumed that Villages C, D, and E would develop as approved by the Planning Commission. That was not an endorsement of that, it's just that they were planning for the worst-case scenario. All four alternatives provide similar benefits. There would be no flooding in living areas from a Matthew-type storm. All the alternatives had pretty much two parts. One part was upgrades to what we call the backbone or the common-to-all system, that's the, that was a new pump station, a new weir, more lake storage, and to create better stormwater flow through the system. The other part was actually going into the existing Villages A and B, digging up the streets and putting in larger inlets and larger stormwater piping. The preliminary cost of those alternatives, which we now know, by the way, are way low, much lower than this, much lower, these alternatives are, these costs are much lower than they actually will be. At the time, though, ranged from 20 to 24 million dollars. So one of the alternatives, Alternative D, was our preferred alternative because it was one of the lower-cost alternatives, it was more resilient to wind tides and future sea level and tailwater increases, and it did not create additional flooding on adjacent properties. However, all the options D plus options A and C were not very conducive to any kind of phasing option. The current owner of Villages C, D, and E, HomeFed, was very interested in moving forward with Village C. Village C cannot move forward until there are improvements in the stormwater system, and so we looked at what could be done in the context of phasing. Phasing would also help the city to some extent in that, one, it would help us with our resource allocation, you wouldn't have to come up with all of the funds for the alternative right away, it would also let us bring some relief to the families in Villages A and B a little earlier. But Alternative B was the only one conducive to phasing. So Phase 1 of Alternative B, and we've had some presentations before, and it may have been called Scenario 5, but now, these days, it's called Phase 1, would improve the conditions in A and B and would also allow Village C to go forward, and it was sized whether it goes forward as currently approved at 98 lots, or if this council decides to grant, to approve one of the Planning Commission recommendations, which would have it construct at 116 lots. Alternative B costs a little more, it's not as resilient with respect to wind tides and seawater and tailwater rises, and it causes some flooding at the Sand Bridge-New Bridge Road intersection. And I do want to stress that Phase 1 by itself would not allow Village D and E to proceed, there would have to be some additional improvements. So Phase 1 includes three new storage ponds and the expansion of one existing pond, some very large canals, a pump station, a gated control weir structure that will let more water out of the subdivision, and it will also allow us to raise that weir when wind tides would actually cause water to flow back into the subdivision, and it also includes the improvements at Sand Bridge and New Bridge Road to relieve the flooding that would be caused by operating the pump station. So in order for this to go forth, we would have to reach some kind of cost participation agreement with the developer, where they pay for part of the Phase 1 and the city pays for the other part. These agreements take many, many forms. Public Works has been working on this now for about a year, looking at various ways that we would apportion these costs between the developer and the city. We looked at methodologies that ranged from 28 to 43% of the, for the developer, meaning that he would pay 20 to 43% of the cost of Phase 1. There were a couple of methods that produced, they were both based on some logical, some logical apportionments, and they both produced cost shares at around 28, 29%. The original Phase 1 cost estimate was 82, 8.2 million, so based on that, the developer would have paid 2.4 million dollars, the city would have paid 5.8. Unfortunately, or unfortunately, those costs were very low, those alternatives were scoped out without any engineering data. Since that time, we've had 30% design done, and we found out, one, under, with the survey data, we found that there was a lot more excavation than what was assumed. Also, the cost to excavate, which is highly variable, it may very well be higher, it depends on how much of the excavated material can be used on-site. And finally, both the developer and the community were pushing to have the ponds relocated to accommodate various concerns and needs on both of their parts, and that caused the cost to go up a little bit, too. So the current costs right now are estimated at 11.2 to 13.5 million, and that depends almost entirely on how much of the excavated material the developer can use on-site and how much has to be hauled off and disposed of somewhere else. And that's based on a 28% cost share for the developer. So what are our next steps? Right now, we're going to continue to maintain the lakes at elevation 2. Public Works has a pumps, a temporary pump out there, but I'll call it sort of a semi-permanent temporary pump. They keep those lakes pumped down to elevation 2, and in the, if we have knowledge of a significant rainfall coming forth, they'll even pump it down to elevation 1. On just this last Friday, we completed the design memo with the costs of Phase 1. We can have a term sheet, we are working on a term sheet, and we can have that finalized in a couple of weeks. Of course, that is subject to HomeFed agreement, and we are drafting the cost participation agreement. By March 30th, Public Works will have advertised the weir and gated control structure, and they'll complete that before the hurricane season. That will go a long way to improve conditions in Asheville Park because it's going to let water leave the system a lot faster. Also, by March 30th, we would anticipate having the cost participation agreement term sheet and the 30% plans all finalized, and then in April, cost, HomeFed would, we would proceed with final design of the pump station and New Bridge Road improvements, and HomeFed, I believe, plans to come here and request some changes to their conditional zoning. And that's all that I have, so.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments? Yes, sir.
I'm more, you know, more in favor of D than B, just to tell you my thought process. You know, we've got to where we're at by suboptimizing, and now we're saying that what we're paying for in big money is less resilient. So, one, I'd like to know the difference between less resilient and the resiliency of D, because that's the risk that we're taking, after we told the public we're trying to address a problem, we're already taking risk already, that's one thing. Might be smarter on our part to get further along and pay, maybe it's more of our money, to get further along in the design process before we, because you said there's still a lot of unknowns, if I heard you say, you know, in terms of excavation and things, maybe we want to get further down the design path, maybe 60% design, so that we have a better understanding of the risk and make sure the cost sharing is right. But I just think, if we're going to go in there, we're consciously saying, we know we're accepting more risk, and we know we have a less resilient system with B for a system that was already broke. I think for me to be comfortable saying I'm doing, I'd like to know what it is, what that difference is between resilient D and less resilient B. I mean, that's.
I can give you that in writing, I can answer it now.
And also, you said we had not yet completed the watershed of the Back Bay watershed, wouldn't be completed until May of 2019, is that correct?
We've completed the watershed 9, or we will complete in the spring, watershed 9, which includes this watershed. The downstream watershed is watershed 11, I believe, 11, and that won't be ready, that won't be done for a while. The runoff from this subdivision is not enough to really affect, I mean, it's already running off now, so.
I won't belabor the point, but I have asked to see the actual modeling results, and I'd like to see those for D and for B, because I have to understand for myself, you know, trust but verify, as I always say, myself, what the risk we're taking.
Other questions or comments, Louis, then Barbara?
Tom, I'm aware of another development that's being proposed, just, I guess it would be south of this, and I'm curious as to how that would, how another development on the old airport property there, and also over on the horse farm, is going to affect this drainage here.
I passed out earlier some pages for you from a presentation we provided last summer that, I think it's Harvest Farms now, last summer was known as Punggoh Ridge. That's a two-part subdivision, one part is the western half of the airfield, and the other half is on the other side of Princess Anne Road, and that developer, well, 47 acres of the airfield flows into Asheville Park right now. It is a significant amount of watershed, but it is throttled through an 18-inch pipe, and because it's throttled through that pipe, both the impacts on Asheville and the benefits on Asheville if it's removed are muted, are smaller than they would otherwise be. But we, as we told you last summer, if that 47 acres were diverted across Princess Anne Road to West Net Creek, and I'm not saying that that's necessarily a great idea, I'm not saying it's a bad idea, I'm saying it's a good idea, but the anecdotal information we have is that the developer had proposed to take that watershed and cross Princess Anne Road with the water and discharge it into West Net Creek. There's no doubt that if you take that 47 acres off of the Asheville Park system, things get a little bit better. They don't get a lot, they don't get greatly better because of that throttling of that pipe, but they do get a little better, and when you're talking about Rainier Village, a little goes a long way. The difference between the roadbed and the garages and the house, and the floor space of the house is very small, and so four inches can be the difference between soaking everything that's laid out in your garage and just having the water up in your yard. So I'm not going to say it's insignificant, I'm just not going to say, our, what our models have been based on Phase 1 assumes that the current condition stays in effect, that that 47 acres continues to flow into Asheville.
Barbara?
Well, let Louis finish, you still thinking?
I'm sorry.
Well, if that's the case, is development of that property really advisable?
The development of Harvest Farms?
Yeah.
Well, you know, that, of course, is up to Planning Commission and Council. The comprehensive plan says that the developer has to come forth with a preliminary engineering study that Public Works and Planning can review, and we'll come back and tell you whether the stormwater system, we think it'll work. At this point, we don't have enough information to say anything other than anecdotally, we know that if you take water off of Asheville, things get a little better. We couldn't tell you what would happen downstream, can't tell you what the cost will be to cross Princess Anne Road with that water, and we can't tell you what the impact on West Net Creek will be until we have this preliminary study and we complete.
Creek will be until we have this preliminary study and we complete watershed 10, and I believe that's due to be done sometime this spring.
Next spring?
No, this spring, watershed 10 this spring.
All right.
Thank you.
Barbara.
There's just so many unknowns, and unfortunately, you know, when this was originally approved in 2005 or whenever, stormwater wasn't even on the radar. And, you know, now the, the, the public is straddled with a very big cost of fixing this, and that is not very politically explainable. But, you know, just looking at the very fact that when this was approved, it was approved for greater than the conference plan recommended. Instead of one unit per acre, it was 1.1 lots, 499 lots instead of 453. And I think that was because it was supposed to have had some age-restricted housing, which was all taken away, but the lots were allowed to remain. And, but I look at, at D and E, which is, I mean, if we, if they go ahead and develop C now, that still leaves D and E, and, and I, I just am very uncomfortable with our making decisions that's going to straddle a future council with having to do something, which may be very difficult, because we really don't have all of the studies. We may be having the stormwater little basins done, or parts of them. We don't have the southern ones done, and won't have for another year. But then the sea level rise study isn't going to be complete until the end of this year. I just, I, I just don't, there are just too many unknowns, and I, I understand that people, particularly in Rainier, are very nervous about another storm, and I, I know that we, we have responsibilities to the, the people who are already there to try to make sure they don't have a, 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 a problem. But it's very hard to, to determine just what the right thing is that we're sure of with so many unknowns still. And I do know that, you know, we have problems there with flooding at the intersection of, of Indian River, I mean, not, well, we do have floodings at Indian River and, and Newbridge, but we're talking about the other end of Newbridge, Sandbridge and, and Newbridge, which definitely needs to be improved, and I guess that weir and that intersection improvement will, will be good for the flooding on Sandbridge Road and, and Newbridge regardless of what's going on with this. But I just, you know, having to make all of these changes, the whole thing is that, that, that plan that was approved in 2005 cannot be built. I mean, that's a given. That plan, as approved, just can't be, be developed because of all of these changes that are having to be made to make these BMPs larger, and having to take some from D to go to C and, and so forth. So I, I think as a conditional zoning, which is what it was, the fact that that plan is not being developed means that we don't have to say they've got 499 lots that we've got to honor, because they can't build that plan. So I just don't want to do anything that, when we get, when, when it gets to development of D and E, a future council finds out they suddenly have to spend a whole lot of money to fix things so that D and E can be developed. And, and that's what I'm really wrestling with, it's the future development that, you know, we are allowing or approving by spending this money, which I know we have to do a good part of this for the existing people, but we are also then allowing for future development that I think the original development was supposed to have fixed to start with. It's just a, one of those things that has got a lot of different aspects to it that make it very difficult to say what is the right thing, and particularly with us not having these other studies completed at this point, not knowing, you know, so if you're looking to me for an answer, folks, I haven't got it.
Well, we're not asking for a decision tonight. We, we, we continue to develop the situation. We'll give you a, a response to his comment. I will tell you, as his boss, that's the first time I've heard him make that comment, so he'll, he'll pay that piper back in the back room, and then we'll give you an answer, because I haven't heard that, that comment about resiliency, DD. I understand the cost aspects. The cost aspects are so that we can incorporate private investment to, to support a currently approved zoning, and then to address a conditional zoning of additional spaces from D and E that, that the planning commission approved, in 15 of which you deferred indefinitely. But until this, these, these 30 percent designs can be handed to the developer and he can understand that, he needs to make sure that his model will pass those, those folks of the Stormwater Center of Excellence and their model behind you, and we'll be happy to walk you through the model, we'll take you into the bullpen, and we'll let you play all afternoon for all you want, Mr. Moss. But the thing is, until they can pass that, and it helps those engineers get through their business, because they are dealing with a pretty serious situation with meeting that. We're not going to bring this to you until we get this cost participation done, that the 30 percent is done, and that the, that the developer has it in his hand, and if he wants to modify his BMPs, he's got to rerun it through the model. So we'll be back to you for a decision, it's just information and an update this day.
Will you get any other things before we move on? Okay. All right. We're going to go now to opportunity zones, because, you know, we've seen a lot of communication, and John referred to some of yours. This thing came out of nowhere, the opportunity zones. I mean, someone in the private sector came to me, we weren't even aware of it, and they had worked diligently to get to what they got. And I saw you say you liked the detail of what was provided. You just didn't see them all.
I'm not going to get in the way of reading forward. But this is not a way to do this.
But understand, I think they're doing the best they can within the timeframe they have. I hope, you see.
I just, I just don't know when the first time it was made known, but as soon as this happened.
I think it was made known, what, two weeks ago?
Actually, last week, we were informed that they're pulling up.
Well, the deadline, we'll, we'll walk you through that, Mayor.
Okay, come on.
Schedule. So even Mayor, members of council, this is, as we had scheduled, to give you an overview of opportunity zones, and hoping we had more time before there was a deadline that was thrown on us last week. But what we're going to walk you through is the background on it, what we've known, what we know about it, the eligibility requirements, and then the recommendations that we have for census tracts. We have a new, a new presentation handout for you, and then there's also the 32 eligible census tracts that gives you some understanding of the data that, that we reviewed there. So what is it? In the Federal Tax Cut and Jobs Act of 2017, it created approach, a replacement for the New Markets Tax Credit Program that had been in existence, which was for commercial investment, particularly in areas that are being redeveloped. And so this is looking to spur long-term private sector investment in low-income and rural communities. Each governor has the opportunity to choose up to 25 percent of the eligible census tracts, and then the designation for those would be established for 10 years. So we were first made aware of this, you know, weeks after the act passed, but in January, and so we do have staff, Kathy Warren, our SGA manager, and Ron Burkabow, our economic analyst at SGA office, that, that they have experience with some of these type of, some of the previous programs and what they mean. And so we spent some time trying to understand the, the, the law, and then what was the potential eligibility. We wanted to make sure that we built a, a case for Virginia Beach being included in whatever the governor names for the 25 percent of census tracts. The state at that time had not released any guidance. So it's later in February where, where they first, last week, where they notified us that there's, there is guidance, and the deadline's Friday for you to rank your eligible census tracts. And so thankfully, we had done some background work and some understanding of the types of programs and this opportunity, and, and getting a sense of what do we have here, because we had done the analysis to get those, and Kathy's going to walk you through the actual eligibility for the census tracts and, and how we arrive at, at a ranking for that. So what is the program? Essentially, what it, it, it creates, there's two main vehicles here. One is, is that it creates the opportunity for private investment to receive tax benefits by investing in an opportunity fund, which then becomes the vehicle for investment in opportunity zones. And so the fund has to be established by a corporation or partnership that is predominantly specific to the type of investments they're making, has to be certified by the U.S. Treasury. And then the funds can be made, can make equity investments in a business or in real estate in these zones, and the investments for real estate have a high bar for rehabilitation. But what we've seen is that the requirements that were previously in New Markets Tax Credits, where they were not as widely used, that the constraints of the opportunity for investment and redevelopment are much better in this program. And so then, the investor, depending on how long they keep that investment in the fund that is used in the zone, there, there is a range of benefit either through deferred tax deferral or the capital gains that are realized in those years, and they range between five and 10 years, depending on, on how they do that. So I'm going to ask Kathy to walk you through the qualification criteria for the census tracts.
Kathy, we're glad to have you.
Good afternoon. Okay, so what qualifies a census tract to be designated as an opportunity zone? It needs to be greater than 20 percent poverty rate and/or less than 80 percent area median income. Also, there's provision that their adjacency to a qualified census tract, as long as the median income does not exceed 125 percent of the adjacent low-income median family income. The Commonwealth currently has 840 qualified census tracts, and the governor may nominate 25 percent or 210 of the, these QCTs as an opportunity zone. Guidance has been issued by the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Virginia Department, the Economic Development Partnership, and the U.S. Treasury. They've identified the following selection criteria to be, that the tract is qualified, it is a qualified opportunity zone tract, that it has identifiable state and/or local incentive programs, that the tract is in a locality with above-average or high fiscal stress index ranking, that the tract contains or is near an economic investment driver, that it has access to a major roadway, and that it's identified by a locality as a strategic economic development area, and any of our SGAs would qualify as that. For the proportionality, it's important to note that locality should expect no more than 25 percent of their eligible census tracts to be placed in opportunity zones. So Virginia Beach has 32 qualified census tracts. We calculated the 25 percent to be eight, obviously here, in the greens, I mean, in the red circles. And I'll go through these. So these recommended QCTs, these recommendations were based on poverty rate, area median income, and investment opportunities for development or redevelopment within the QCT. So the eight listed here are the SeaTac area, the Burton Station area, the Central Village District and the Pembroke SGA, the Bonnie Road area, the Hilltop South area, south of Route 264, Corporate Landing, the Lynn Haven Corridor area, and Hilltop North of Route The next slides I'm going to go through are the rankings of nine through 32. These are in no particular order, but the list that we provided you does show how we ranked the next nine after the first eight. So in the northeast quadrant, we have Fort Story. And again, these tracts were ranked lower than the top eight because they either didn't have the development or redevelopment opportunities that we were looking for, they were, had a high percentage of residential, or the, they're, they were military installation, so they didn't, they weren't really appropriate for this program. The next set on the eastern side of the city is Dam Neck and the Laskin to 21st Street census tracts. The four contiguous tracts in the central area of the city, this is the south of Lynn Haven area of the Lynn Haven SGA, the Lynn Haven SGA, the west of Great Neck, north of 264 area, and the north of 264 between First Colonial and Great Neck. The next six census tracts in the western part of the city were south of Central Village District, the Western Campus of Pembroke SGA, the Wesleyan Drive area, Independence and Haygood, Aragona, and Pembroke, Virginia Beach Boulevard Northeast quadrant. In the northwest part of the city, we had two additional census tracts, east, the one is east of Burton Station, and then Joint Expeditionary Base. In the southeast, we have three census tracts, southeast, we have two at southeast of Military Highway, near Route 64, and then Indian Lakes, Rosemont Forest area. And then a central cluster of six tracts, South Plaza Trail, Windsor Oaks West, west of Rosemont, Windsor Oaks West, east of Holland Road, the lakes, Green Run, South Independence, adjacent to Green Run, and South Independence and Princess Anne. So our next steps, the city recommends the qualified census tracts for opportunity zone designation by March 2nd. We'll do this with an online submittal. The Department of Housing and Community Development and the Virginia Economic Development Partnership review those nominations and make recommendations to the governor's office, and then the governor submits the opportunity zone designated census tracts to the U.S. Treasury, and that's up to 25 percent again by March 22nd. Any questions?
Thank you very much, John.
I'm recording. I have privately expressed my, my opinions about the process and where we are. I would hope in the future, as soon as the staff knows, that we could be so informed. I don't know that, that these aren't the best, most of them are. I have some questions on some that I think might have been included. I don't question the good judgment and thought process that you have, but I really do think that in the future, we just need to have more time so that we can actually express our thoughts rather than be caught in no choice but to go with what we go, and I don't want to hold this up.
And John, thank you for that, but at the same time, I think they've done the best they could do in the amount of time they had.
I just, so that, but had we known sooner, we could have at least shared our own thoughts. That's all I'm saying.
I just throw the date up here and say, Mr. Moss, as their boss, they have done an amazing job to be here where they are with the amount of work.
I agree, but upon the 25th, I know census tracts are online, all that data is online with the census here, the data is available to the public, you can go online and look at, so can I.
All right. We'll move on. Thank you, John. All right, T, let's get back on schedule here. Ron, you've been hanging around, and we welcome you, our new real estate assessor. Glad to have you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
You know the best report, Ron?
Sir?
It's a quick report.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. You can bet on it. It's my pleasure to, to give you the real estate assessor's annual report for the first time myself. We've had it many times, but what I'm going to be delivering very quickly to you is our projected FY 2019 real estate assessment. And we're projecting right now $57,106,267,600, which is tax revenue of $572,493,333,000. And, and that's based off the current tax rate of the $1.0025 per hundred. And each penny of the tax rate would generate $5,711,000. I can't believe I did that page without my glasses. That was big print. The overall median chain. The overall median change is 1.85, the mean is 2.21. This is the actual change through January 2018, when notices are being mailed. Notices will be mailed this Friday. We've got over 155,000 notices that will go out to the public this Friday. And residential, the mean, 2.17. I, I think what stands out here is the apartments. The apartments are, are approaching 6%, and this is just data up to this date right now. So we expect that to get a little bit higher. Appreciation and appreciation how that racks up into the past. This slide shows, it's just a strike date of when we closed the books and, and made the assessments for, for what's going to be mailed out this Friday. But you can see it's, we're kind of in a, an almost level atmosphere right now with, with our projections based on last year and this year. Residential values, this is a breakdown that rolls from January 17 to January of 2018. The mean assessment on a single-family, 338,200, which is a 2.3% increase. Townhouses, 156,000, 2.6. You can see the other ones, I won't call them all out, but the, the residential bottom line is all residences, the average, or the mean assessment is $298,300. You can see the median's a little bit more, and that's 2.3%. None of that includes the apartments. Down at the bottom, you can see that we have 36,041 apartment units in the city. This historical chart just shows where we've been and where we're at. And that 298,300 on the previous slide is that last bullet on the chart. And as of January 2018, again, 16.7% of our property is commercial, 83.3% is residential. This is number of tax records, it's not number of buildings, it's the number of G pens that we have, it's what it's based off of. New construction. New construction is down a bit from last year. We have 23.3% of the new construction is commercial, and 76.7% is residential, with the 106, 106 million, 946,100 for the commercial, 352 million, 152,600. This is over the last 12 months, and it totals $459,098,700. Number of new houses built, just continuing the graph from the previous slide, just shows the trend. And it's a bit sporadic, but it's, it's, it's just, it's just a little volatile is what it is, and, but I think it's going to average out is what we're seeing anyway. We just had a couple of bad quarters of new construction, and I think that's going to recover by what we see in the ground right now. Changes in land, and this is due to market appreciation, not in, I'm sorry, this is, this has, this is not market appreciation, this is due to rezonings and subdivisions of property. In 2017, we saw $58,273,200. Again, down somewhat. Growth and appreciation broken out. The growth is 0.9%, the appreciation is 1.9%, for a total of the 2.8% that I'm projecting to get us through 2019. And you can see the breakdown. Last year, we projected 2.7, just so you know, now we're projecting 2.8. We actually realized when it was all over, said and done, the dust settled, we realized 3.1 on that 2.7 projection last year. Some of the programs that, that we monitor for you or service is the TIFs and the Special Service District. The Sandbridge District is at $1.2 billion over the base. The Central Business District is 910 million. The SSD is 464.3 million. The dredging districts, the SSDs, as you can see, these are the preliminary numbers that we have at this point, and this is as of January 2018. And I don't believe we've had a new one this year, I think Hertz code was the last one that went in. The Virginia Landmarks Register costs us right now $71,399. That's based on the .5325 tax rate that you approved for historical buildings that the state registered. The City of Virginia Beach Historic Rehabilitation has been pretty steady over the years. We did add one this year, though. What we added, the, the old Kempfville High School. And so those apartments units, the 525 Kempfville Road, has been added to it. Those credits will total $35,082 for those three properties, and they stay in effect for 15 years. Energy-efficient buildings, this is probably, it certainly is the most growing program that we're, that we're monitoring right now. A, a day or two doesn't go by very often that I don't get one or two of these on my desk to approve. But we're at 93 of them right now, so they are picking up. And that is a reduction for them of 15 cents on the tax rate. So that is, that is the largest growing program that we're seeing that we're monitoring right now. Total parcels of real estate, to put things in perspective, because I'm adding inventory maintenance in here, because it is a major part of what we do since we took it over from, from the Commissioner of Revenue. We have 157,940 taxable parcels, that's up 683 parcels from last year. 3,768 exempt parcels, that's down 26 parcels from last year, for a grand total of 161,708 parcels. The inventory maintenance, which is the ownership transfers, over 15,000 instruments are read by our real estate transfer clerks in calendar year 2017. Subdivision plats, 381. And please don't mistake corrections as mistakes, corrections are just things that come in and have to be fixed, could be a correction deed from an attorney, it's just what's called in the system, 449. Those are the major things they do, there are several other pieces to that, that puzzle. Exemptions, the real estate tax exemption, even though we don't administer this, this is off the land book, you had 1,441 for the AK, the armed forces killed in action, and the tax reduction was $4.3 million. The seniors for the tax exemption deferral freeze and disabled, 5,813 recipients for $9.8 million in tax reductions. And I'll be glad to take your questions.
Great presentation. Any questions or comments? Thank you for coming over, really appreciate it, and look forward to continuing working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Appreciate it, man. Nice support.
Okay, Bike Ways and Trails update, can we get this in 20? Wayne, how are you?
I'm doing very well, thank you very much.
As, as Wayne is about to go to the podium, this will be his last official City of Virginia Beach function.
Huh?
Wayne has accepted a position back in hometown USA.
Roanoke County, yes, sir.
Going back to Roanoke. He's, he's got a lot of job experience here, and they hired him back to take charge. So we're proud of him, and he's going to go take a big job, and he's going to be the boss.
Well, I wouldn't go quite that far, but...
Yes, you would. Go ahead. Well, congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. It's, it's good to be back, thank you. I'm going to go ahead, since we are on a very limited timeframe, and I'm going to skip the first third of this presentation, although maybe I should come back to this. This is an excerpt from the Bike Ways and Trails Advisory Committee Annual Report, which was in your Friday packet a few weeks ago, or fairly recently. One thing you might want to just kind of take note of is that we are doing a study of how to build a shared use path in the Norfolk Southern Corridor. It's really going to be an attractive thing to, to have a trail there. It's one of the places that people are most wanting us to, to get a trail built. Moving on, Thalia Creek Greenway is moving forward. In fact, we're going to go to construction next week. Let's see. So the Bike Ways and Trails System, in 2011, we, we developed a list of seven top priority infrastructure projects. Here they are, you can see the first two are already completed. Another one is Thalia Creek Greenway going to construction, like I said, next week, or next month, however you want to look at it. Three others are in planning stages and are moving forward, we believe. And the fourth is a, or the last one is a very long-term kind of project that will happen sometime, I hope, over the next decade or so. Looking back at Shore Drive where one of those projects happened, this is just kind of recalling what the situation was like back in 2011, when you might recall there were some incidents, there was a lot of publicity around what it was like to be a pedestrian or a cyclist on Shore Drive. At that time, this is what there, what facilities we had for cyclists and pedestrians on Shore Drive. Kind of sporadic in many ways. In a couple more years, in 2022, when Phase 3 is completed, which is the, the green eight-foot SUP thing right there, this is what we're going to have. The blue is what's on-road, the, the green is what's, no, I got that backwards again. The blue is what's off-road for, no, I'm getting it backwards, backwards. That's what happens when you hurry up. The blue is what's on-road, bike lanes and paved shoulders, mostly for bicyclists. And the green is what's off-road for pedestrians and bicyclists who, who don't want to be riding on the road. So that's making Shore Drive a much friendlier place for, for everybody. Now, I didn't want anyone to actually have to read through this even when we had more time, but it just points out that there are really two categories of projects. Standalone projects that are just bikeways or sidewalks, and road projects that have paths as a component of them. And this really points out the value and the, the partnership that we have right now with Public Works to get a lot of these things done quickly, well, quickly as you can on a road project. But for me, it's really easy because I just let them do all the work. And so the system has been growing a lot. One thing that I skipped over is most of the difference between the 2004 number that you see there of 105 miles and the 2018 miles of 297 is due to repaving and restriping process. Every year, Public Works shares with us the, the repaving schedule, and we look at it for opportunities to repave or restripe a little bit differently from how we have it striped right now. Sometimes we're just moving a stripe over a little bit, other times we're actually getting new bike lanes out of it. But about 140 miles of the difference is just because of that. And the best part is, it costs almost nothing. You know, when you're painting the same stripe a foot over, it's costing the same amount. One of the challenges that we've had over the, the last several years is continuity and connectivity. If you look at these three oval areas, it's real easy to see how, these are just the off-road paths that I'm showing, and can you actually see? No, you can't see the laser pointer. You can see how with these off-road paths and the, the residential road networks around them, it's real easy to get around in any of those red oval areas, but it's really difficult, if you're not a competent road cyclist, to get from one red oval to the other. And those are just examples. You could, you could draw red ovals like this on several other areas, but that's just sort of highlighting the, the challenge of continuity between our facilities and connectivity across the city. We do have, of course, a crash history. This is about six years' worth of reports that come into DMV and VDOT. And you notice, you know, the little blue box on the big map blown up shows the concentration of crashes that happen in the resort area. If you look at it closely, you'll notice a lot of these little blue dots and red dots are on some of the major roadways, on the Boulevard, on Great Neck Road, on some of the other four-lane roadways. What you don't notice is many crashes that have happened south of the green line. That's not to say that that's nirvana for cyclists and pedestrians, it's just to say that there are very few crashes being reported in that area. Other things that have been going really well, we, we are a bike-friendly community, I brought even a visual aid here. This was sent to us by the League of American Bicyclists to recognize that we have achieved this. That was in November of 2015. We also have the annual Bike Rodeo and the Bike Ride with the Mayor. I hope we'll be able to work that out again this year. It's always a, a good time had by all. And that moves us then into the Bike Ways and Trails Plan Update. Did you have a question? Okay, excuse me. We're moving through the process, we've completed the first couple of stages, we're in the final steps of the plan revisions. The Bike Ways and Trails Advisory Committee is doing sort of an interim review of the, the revisions we've made, and hopefully before long, we'll be able to get into the review and adoption process. A lot of stuff has changed in the last seven years since that plan was adopted. The two things I want to highlight are that we have a constantly improving partnership collaboration with Public Works. Our two departments are working together a lot to make a lot of stuff happen smoothly. But also, the Complete Streets Policy that was adopted in November of 2014 makes it so that now we can expect that every road project that gets built is going to include whatever facility, well, let me just rephrase that, it's going to take all users into account. A lot of roads in the past have been done mainly for motor vehicles, and pedestrians and cyclists might get a five-foot sidewalk on one side or the other. Now we're taking a much more attentive approach to making sure that things are, that, that roads are built for all of the users that are likely to be there. As part of the Bike Ways and Trails Plan Update, of course, we have a robust public involvement process, but independently of that, Parks and Recreation, every fivish years, does a needs assessment survey. And what's striking about the one that was done in 2017 is you notice the top nine priorities for investment that were highlighted in that report were Bike Ways and Trails and Bike Ways and Trails. And then number eight was Bike Ways and Trails. Can I reiterate that anymore? Again, I mean, that, out of the, out of nine, out of about 25 or 30 types of facilities, that's what people really want to see and what they, they feel a, a great need for. Now, within the input process, we had for the Bike Ways and Trails Plan, we asked, what do you really want? And a lot of what people want boils down to, when I'm on my bike or I'm, or I'm on foot, I want more separation from cars. We don't want, people don't want to be riding in the street any more than they have to be. And they want more connectivity, which gets back to the, the map we had earlier. People had a lot of ideas about corridors and, and places where new Bike Ways and Trails would fit in well. These five sites definitely were the cream of the crop. This is where people most often said that they wanted to see something happen. And the two that are highlighted, the Norfolk Southern Corridor and the Nemo Corridor out to Sandbridge, were where the most of the most people. Can I say that? That's where, you know, the most comments were made about people wanting to see something new get built. Operationally speaking, it shouldn't be any surprise that people are very concerned about safety, and mostly about drivers who are aggressive or distracted. And then one major part of the solution to the safety problem would be education, letting people understand better how they're supposed to drive around bicyclists and pedestrians, and understand better how to ride their bike or walk when they're along a roadway. A lot of people just don't really know what the rules of the road are in the presence of these other modes, and/or they just decide not to comply. Now, in the 2011 plan, we outlined a four-part approach for, excuse me, how we're going to develop new Bike Ways and Trails. And in the 2018 plan, these are going to be updated, excuse me, these are going to be affirmed, but we're going to add three new directions, three new ways of, of looking at some of these. I touched on this earlier, or I, I think I would have in the, the part we skipped. One thing is to build complete streets. These are roads that are designed for taking all users into account. That's been rare in our car-dependent suburban America, but people are demanding it and expecting it increasingly for better walkability and a more urbane kind of lifestyle. Another thing I call focusing on the middle majority, this little bar chart on the left is sort of a measurement that was developed in Portland for adults when they think about cycling. On the left end is, they call it strong and fearless, I'm not quite in that category, I'm in the next one, the enthused and confident. I can ride just about anywhere. I can ride just about anywhere. I've even ridden on Virginia Beach Boulevard, on the Boulevard. Won't do that very often, though. The category all the way to the right is the no-way, no-how category. These people will not ride a bike regardless of what you build for them. There's no sense in trying to address their interests because they don't have any interests. The category in the middle, yeah, the category in the middle is where we can move the needle the most. It's where we can develop facilities that people will decide they want to ride on. I put my wife in that category. She's a good bit more timid than I am, but she is an enthusiastic cyclist, so she'd be happy to get out there and ride much more often if there were good facilities that she'd be comfortable on. Another way of looking at this, another term that's out there right now, sort of a synonym, is designing for all ages and abilities. I don't know if the term eight to 80 has come up for you before, but that's a way of looking at it where you want to be able to design something for someone who's eight years old or 80 years old. So the whole idea is to design for the gamut of people who want to be riding or walking. So what are they looking for? They're looking for safety, comfort, and equity. And what does that mean to them? That means slowing down traffic so that it feels safer to be riding near them, but it also means trying to be more separated from motor vehicles. A good example is in the photo there on South Plaza Trail. We have a, what's called a separated bike lane or a buffered bike lane, and that's one of the things that people are looking for, or just being completely off-road. The third new approach or new direction is called Vision Zero. This is something that was developed in Sweden back in the 1990s, and the idea is there's no reason why people have to die on the road, and no loss of life is acceptable when all you're trying to do is go places. So the approaches they take is trying to eliminate the worst kinds of crashes, the traffic fatalities and the severe injuries. And of course, that's going to be most valuable, most important for what we call vulnerable road users, which is, of course, pedestrians and cyclists. Now, one of the things we're doing in the 2018 update is a level of traffic stress analysis. This is a geographic information system study, a GIS study, that they can do over the entire city, which takes into account traffic speed, traffic volume, road width, the presence or absence of bike lanes or other facilities, and comes up with an overall rating for each road segment. Now, two things that I take away from this map is how many of the roads are in that sort of light pastel-green color. Nearly all of our roads are in that kind of a color, or the light blue, which is the also fairly low stress. But then you can also look at it and see which roads are red. You're looking at the Boulevard, you're looking at Independence Boulevard, Great Neck Road, all the roads that when you're driving around, you use to get across the city or get any real distance. So the takeaway from this is really that people can get around by bike or on foot fairly easily for a little distance. But if they want to go anywhere beyond their neighborhood, they're not going to have a lot of success at that. In fact, here, those same three circles or ovals that we looked at earlier, it's real easy to get around Little Neck Peninsula, but getting from Little Neck Peninsula to the oceanfront is a real challenge unless you're a road cyclist like myself. So that points to two kinds of needs. One is off-road facilities along the major roads, and the other is connections between neighborhoods so that people can avoid having to go out to the major roads. So the part we've all been waiting for. Conclusions. Citizens really want more bike ways and trails, and I say that even as I'm leaving and I don't get to play that game anymore. These three directions that we've talked about just in the last few moments are going to be a big part of enhancing the system for all of our users. I didn't get to talk about needing the operating funds, but one thing that was in that Bike Ways, the BTAC Annual Report, was the need for some funds to start doing some educational programs and to start collecting data on where people are walking and how many people are walking, biking in different areas. We have like 300 different counting stations around the city for motor vehicles, but zero for bikes and pedestrians. So we need to play a little catch-up here. And finally, we are making good progress on some projects, the repaving especially, that have minimal costs, and we're doing a lot of other good projects that have more normal kind of customary costs. So all that said, if you have questions...
Barbara, you're our liaison, if I recall.
Well, as a liaison, I will say that, you know, having Virginia Beach be recognized as a biker-friendly community wasn't where we were a few years ago.
Yes, come a long way.
I think we were one of the worst in the area, but I know we're going to miss Wayne's enthusiasm and his persistence and his aggression because I think that's what's got us to where we are. And we can appreciate his knowledge with a report like this. And it's going to be hard to fill those shoes to be as aware of everything that's out there as he is, and I'll just say thank you for all that you've accomplished because I think that's been a lot for us. And sometimes we've not gone real willingly, but you've gotten there, and I think that's the important thing. I know that we've got conflicts sometimes between bikers and automobiles, and it's a real challenge. But thank you, and...
I'd like to echo that. I really would. Wayne, of course, personally, has worked with you a whole lot longer than I have or more than you, but I remember coming up and having those meetings at the Bank a number of years ago and really got some things off the ground, and I hope you're proud of what you've accomplished, sir, because...
I'm very pleased.
You really did a lot to get the bicycling community working with the city, and at the same time, we did some things for them. So we really do thank you for your service and all the luck in the world to you.
And thank you for your support in everything that we've been trying to do.
Yes, sir. You take care.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I'd like to reintroduce Jimmy McNamara to you. He has presented to the City Council before. He is the recent recipient of a very well-deserved promotion, so you are going to see more of him in the future. So take it away, Jimmy.
Hopefully, we'll keep it short tonight.
With your four minutes, you keep your job.
I say, here we go.
Pressures on.
All right, we've got 11 items scheduled for you. We're going to concentrate on six of those items, as the last five will be for the short-term rental, and I think you've discussed that at length already. All right, so the first item is going to be for Alba Taxi, they're requesting a conditional use permit for an automobile repair garage and bulk storage. Site is located within the greater than 75 noise zone, APZ2, special economic growth area, and the C-Tech suburban focus area. So what they're proposing, 1,800-square-foot building for their automobile repair. They are also asking for six spaces to be used for their, storage of their taxis when they're not out on the road. Opposition was present at the Plan Commission centered on traffic, environmental impacts, and the compatibility of the proposed use with the residential uses on Bell's Road. Plan Commission did vote 11 to 0 to recommend approval. Next is a conditional use permit for a craft brewery located in Taylor Farm Road. The applicant has operated on the site since 2010 as a beverage manufacturing facility. They are now proposing to expand to the adjacent suite, so they need a conditional use permit for a craft brewery. There is a Navy restrictive easement on the property. They have obtained a letter of compliance from the Navy with the restrictions of the restrictive easement, and staff is unaware of any opposition to this request. Next is Old donation church. They are looking at expanding their administrative building, so they are seeking a conditional use permit for religious use. We cannot find a conditional use permit for this facility as it's been there for a while, so they may have not gone through.
Been there a long while.
Just a bit. So they're looking at enlarging their administrative building. There's going to be no changes to historic structure. They have been before the Historical Review Board and have obtained a certificate of appropriateness. The adjacent property owner to the east did speak in opposition to the request at the public hearing and noted concerns with noise, parking, and drainage. Plan Commission did vote 11 to 0 to recommend approval. As a result of the opposition, the church is considering putting up a fence, although that is not conditioned with the use permit. Next item is subdivision variance along Shore Drive and Treasure Island Drive. The applicant proposes to subdivide the residentially zoned site into three lots. The corner lot is deficient of lot width as it's proposed with 81.8 feet of lot width rather than the 90 feet required, so subdivision variance to lot width is requested. We are not aware of any opposition. They have met with Bay Lake Pines Civic League, and apparently they are in support of the application. Next is a very similar request, to resubdivide two parcels with an existing east-west orientation into a north-south orientation, which is consistent with the alignment of lots along this block of 27th Street. The proposed corner lot will only have 40 feet rather than the 50 feet that's required. They are proposing to put four single-family dwellings on here and to remove the eight legally non-conforming units on the site. There were two speakers in opposition at the Plan Commission hearing who noted concerns related to the proposed density, loss of green space, and change of character for the neighborhood. Plan Commission did vote 11 to 0 to recommend approval. And the last item that I'll be discussing is a conditional use permit for a outdoor recreation facility, specifically a batting cage within the Lagomar neighborhood. This applicant's son is looking to use a batting cage for up to 45 minutes per day. Recommended time is to be from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., somewhere in between them, about 45 minutes. The proposed cage is located on the eastern property line, as the applicant has received a letter of support from that neighbor. Staff received nine letters of support and two letters of opposition for this request. There was one speaker in opposition at the Plan Commission public hearing who noted concerns related to the amount of time that the cage would be used daily and the potential for others to use a cage as well. Plan Commission did vote 11 to 0 to recommend approval.
Is this just for his own personal use?
Yes, sir.
And it requires action?
Yeah, we've done it before.
Yes, same. Typically, over the past, we have issued similar conditional use permits for similar uses in neighborhoods, and I think zoning administration, if you have any questions.
Recreational uses that have the potential to generate noise, skateboard ramps for one, batting cages, we traditionally require that use permit. That way, we can put conditions and let the neighborhood...
And you have two people opposed to it.
All right, folks.
What happened to the Argos?
Our...
April 3rd. April 3rd, okay.
All right, council, great work, a lot of work.
Good job, Jimmy.